Firstly, can I advise that we have apologies from councillors Tony Conception and Helen Thompson. Are there any further apologies to report from members? No. I also need to report at this juncture that Agenda Item 10, which relates to number 123 Smith-Don Road, Picton in Liverpool 7, has been withdrawn from consideration of today's meeting at the request of the Head of Planning. That will come forward for consideration and determination in due course. Moving on, in terms of practicalities for today, in the absence of the Chair and indeed in the absence of an appointed deputy, can I invite nominations for a Chair for the duration of the proceedings today only?
Seconded.
For the benefit of public record, we have a formal resolution to move that councillor John Prince be appointed Chair for the duration of today's meeting. That is seconded and has been assented to by the remaining members of the committee and is therefore effective for today. Moving forward therefore, are there any declarations of interest from members on today's items of business? When I turn my microphone off, if you could please ensure you use your microphone when you speak. Also, please indicate clearly which item of business your declaration relates to. Thank you.
Can I declare a personal non pecuniary interest in Agenda Item 7 relating to the former cooperative food supermarket site in Spiggarston Ward as a former employee of the applicant? I will be leaving the chamber, not participating in consideration of our, of or voting on this application. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Key. For the benefit of the record as well, once that item of business is concluded, I will give an indication so you can return to the chamber for the remaining items of business. I believe councillor Marriott has also indicated.
Yeah, item 8 had declared in it, well, I want to say declared an interest, Michael, an objection letter has gone in. And it includes my name on it.
Thank you councillor Marriott for purposes of clarity. Therefore, the effect of your interest means that as you previously made representations and expressed a view on this application, that means you're predetermined and therefore you weren't able to participate in the application as a member of committee. You may however, if you choose, address committee and comment in your capacity as a local ward councillor in the same right as a member of the public. Thank you. Are there any further interests to declare? Councillor Prince?
I was going to ask the same question. Are there any other items, any other declarations of interest? Oh, in that case, we can move on to the next item, which is the appointment of a deputy Chair, please.
Can I move councillor Thompson, please?
Can I second that one?
Thank you colleagues. Our members agreeable to the appointment of councillor Helen Thompson as Deputy Chair for the remainder of this full year. Members could please raise your hands clearly when I turn the microphone off. Thank you colleagues. The vote is concluded and the vote is unanimous and therefore councillor Thompson is appointed Deputy for this year. I can confirm at this stage that we have no urgent items of business to consider today. Therefore, without further delay, we will now move on to our first item of business. Number four on the published agenda, which relates to Anfield Stadium within, on Anfield Road, Liverpool 4, which is located within Anfield Ward.
Actually, before we actually do that, I just wanted to put on record our thanks to the previous chairwoman, Loe Bryant, for the work she's done in chairing this committee over the couple of years. I think that's important, we do that. And now we can indeed move on to Anfield Stadium. We are considering a recommendation, the application number 20F stroke 3090 in respect of Anfield Stadium, Anfield Road, Liverpool L4 OTH, Anfield Ward, to extend the Anfield Road stand following partial demolition to provide up to 7,000 additional seats and internal facilities, including general admission con courses, hospitality lounges, a family fan zone, club offices, staff facilities and plant and equipment with associated public realm, lighting, landscaping and associated infrastructure and use of the stadium for other team sporting events and to host up to six major events per annum for up to five years, be approved subject to a legal agreement and conditions as proposed by the Head of Planning. Now, we have a number of speakers registered to address the committee for this on behalf of the applicant and also there's some, I think, speaking against. So if we can start with our, by asking our first speaker, Mike, which I think is Sam Bryan, is that correct, to go first?
Thank you Chair, that's correct. I'm just going to display the PowerPoint presentation on screen for the benefit of those in the chamber and viewing proceedings online. Once that appears then I would ask Sam to unmute my microphone and take us to the item of business. Thank you. Sam, you should be able to see this slide on screen now. If you are, you can commence your presentation. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you very much, Mike. I'd actually like to start by, actually, I'm going to hand over to Andy Hughes, who's the Chief Operations Officer of the club for the first few slides. He's actually going to present the scheme itself and then I'll move on to some of the technical matters afterwards. So if I can hand over to Andy for these first few slides, please. I'll turn my camera off for the moment.
Thank you very much, Sam, and good morning, everyone. Could we move on to the next slide, please? So I was just going to kick off by summarising the application, but I think that's actually already taken place. I think it's important to sort of recognise the significant level of improvement in facilities, both for fans, but including the significantly improved accessibility facilities as well. And also the public realm space behind the stand, which has a very similar look and feel to 96th Avenue behind the main stand, much improved integration with Stanley Park and the temporary planning application for major events as well across a five-season period. Could you just move on to the next slide, please? So just as some background, Liverpool Football Club has been in discussion with Liverpool City Council and others concerning regeneration of the Anfield area for a very long period of time. And the club has made some really significant investments and followed through on those commitments. It really started a long time ago with a significant investment in the restoration and regeneration of Stanley Park. And then in 2016, we completed the main stand development, 96th Avenue, the public realm behind the main stand and also the Anfield Road Fan Park. And as part of that process, we did apply for outline planning permission to develop the Anfield Road stand, which is the subject of today's application. In addition, we also made a multi-million pound investment in a new retail store on Walton Breck Road. And then as a separate application, we applied for a template planning permission for holding six major events for a period of up to two years, which was interrupted because of the pandemic. As part of that process, we did make commitments to improve our consultation and engagement with local residents, which included the recruitment of a resident liaison manager, much more regular meetings with the community through ward councillor meetings and surgeries. Those meetings and that consultation has led to some, quite a number of small but overall significant improvements in the experience for residents, both on match days and on major event days. And that has now become a permanent process in terms of how the club operates. Next slide, please. So in terms of engagements, the club held two public consultation sessions in late 19 and early 20. There were multiple events held, both on match days, non-match days and online. They were really well attended by the local community. I attended many of those sessions myself with my team, with the resident liaison manager and our advisers. And there's no question that the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. But it was also really clear from that first consultation session that there was real concern from some of the residents who live closest to the stadium around the proposed closure of Anfield Road. So in the original outline planning permission that was granted, Anfield Road was proposed to be closed. And that was the proposal that we put forward in that first consultation meeting. There was also concerns around the build itself, the location of the site compound and some design feedback. So after that first planning consultation meeting, public consultation meeting, we did go away and relook hard at the design, redesign the stadium itself to find enough room so that we could reroute Anfield Road around the back of the stadium. We've also relocated the site compound onto Stanley Park and we've made a number of design changes. And I think we really have a really strong design offer now that's very consistent with the main stand, both internal and external and the public realm space and the feed into Stanley Park. As I said, overall, the support was really strong. And in terms of the data in the second public consultation meeting, the overall positives in support of the overall project vision was actually 98%. In terms of the local residents, the L4 postcode resident, that was actually 87% with just 3% objectors and 10% unsure. So overall, it was really well supported through that process. And I would like to thank the residents and ward councillors for their involvement. So on that note, I'll just hand back to Sam to go through some of the more, some of the details.
Thanks, Andy. If you could move on to the next slide, please. So this shows the proposed layout of the development and you can see the footprint of the Anfield Road Stadium with Anfield Road realigned around that and the public realm also that supports that extending from what is currently on 96th Avenue, the high quality of 96th Avenue, around the external perimeter of the new Anfield Road stand. As Andy said, the scale, height and massing of the scheme is very similar to what was proposed and actually approved by the council in 2004, other than the fact that Anfield Road now is to be diverted around the stand, particularly at the request of local members and the local community. As currently happens, Anfield Road will be closed to vehicles on match days and event days. But other than that, it will be fully open to vehicles within the demise of the club and maintained by the club to the very high quality finish that is proposed. And it will be consistently open for pedestrians and cyclists as currently occurs. You can actually see briefly on this drawing that there are proposals to actually link the stadium public realm into Stanley Park and improve that experience of walking from Walton Breck Road through 96th Avenue and on into Stanley Park. That's also illustrated on the next slide. If you'd move on to that one, please. So the next slide, please. Thank you. This shows the tree planting strategy associated with the stadium scheme. And you'll also see there are two, in the centre of the slide, you'll see two new entrances proposed into Stanley Park, which is from approaching the main entrance to the Anfield Road stand. Existing entrances into Stanley Park at the right-hand side of the slide, the top image, the plan, they exist at present. What's proposed is to remove 25, sorry, 27 trees overall to facilitate the development. 11 of those trees currently exist around the OB area, the outside broadcast area. Those trees were planted at the time that the main stand was developed. They now need to be removed to facilitate an enlargement of the outside broadcast area to meet UEFA requirements. But they will be reprovided. They are the small dots at the top left-hand side of that plan that you can see. All the tree planting is along the boundary with Stanley Park and you can see the boundary and tree planting in that planning image there and also in the visual image of the new Anfield Road stand at the bottom left of the screen. Longer distances across Stanley Park aren't really affected by any of the changes to tree removal because the stand is actually visible above the trees anyway. But I just thought it was important to point that out as well. Overall, there will be 25 trees replanted within the club's demise and as section 106 commuted some payment equivalent to the provision of a further 45 trees will be given to Liverpool City Council for additional tree planting within Stanley Park itself. If you can move on to the next slide, please. The transport strategy for the enlarged stadium is very largely the same as what currently exists now in that it's, it will be led by the Transport Working Group. It's a match and, a match day and event day transport strategy, which is a dynamic document that has existed and been in place since the main stand was extended. It has focus on sustainable travel modes, principally bus, taxi, coach facilities and supported by ticketing and marketing strategies that are operated by the club. There are regular meetings of a transport working group with members of the city council's highways department, local bus and taxi firms, Mersey Travel, that continually monitor and review the effectiveness of the transport strategy to ensure that it is able to accommodate people attending the stadium on match and non-match days. If you can move on to the next slide, please. The application has been assessed in accordance with the city council's planning policies and is overall in compliance with the development plan. In addition to that, it's been assessed against the city council's local, sorry, inclusive growth plan and scores very well against the six of the objectives set out in that plan. In particular, being able to make a significant contribution to a strong and inclusive economy and making Liverpool a more exciting city to visit, one of the most exciting cities to visit in the UK. The facts and figures are on the screen in front of you on the slide and I won't go into detail. But you can actually see the level of economic development and job creation as a result of the proposals. Clearly, this has been a very rapid talk through the application proposals and there's a lot of detail set out in the officers' report committee. I hope members are able to support the officers in their recommendation. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Can I ask, is Joanne Roberts or Ian Tomlinson speaking to the committee? Or was it just?
No, I'm sorry, Chair.
That's okay, it's on my list. That's all I was asking for. Right, are there any questions of Sam and Andy then, please? Anna?
Thank you Chair. So without a doubt, this scheme has some very, very strong benefits to it. However, my concern is the encroachment into Stanley Park. So many environmental groups have raised this issue, so have ward councillors as well as other members of the council. So can the applicant detail what exactly the encroachment into Stanley Park will be? And whether it can be avoided or mitigated, whether it will be permanent or temporary? And, you know, as you will be aware, this is an area where many residents have, just like backyards, they don't have access to gardens. So Stanley Park is a cherished green space locally. And my second question is about your transport strategy. So you said in your presentation that you focus on non-car modes. Can you detail how, how exactly do you do this? Like what processes do you have in place to discourage car use? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll take both of those questions. Firstly, with regard to Stanley Park, the development is not being built at all in Stanley Park. The only direct effect on Stanley Park is the creation of two new pedestrian access points from the Anfield Road, from the new public realm that's been created around the stand into Stanley Park. So there are currently two relatively modest access points that enter Stanley Park now. And they will be very similar, so the new pathways into the park. As I say, other than that, there is no direct impact on Stanley Park at all. And it's been a long-held ambition through the Anfield regeneration strategy that was been approved, is approved by the council as a supplementary planning document to actually improve the linkage from Walton Breck Road now through, what happens through 96th Avenue into Stanley Park to encourage people to move between the two. So this actually, the proposals actually provide that enhancement by actually increasing the number of opportunities to actually move through that very attractive new public realm that's been created from Walton Breck Road, as I say, 96th Avenue around the stand and actually make pedestrian connections into the park. There was a question raised quite early on and a number of comments raised by the Friends of the Park relating to where the communities, where the construction compound would be placed. Initially, it was proposed that that would be placed within, on the green area of Stanley Park. But following feedback that we had from those groups, the construction compound has actually been moved to within the car park within Stanley Park. So there is no encroachment at all during the construction period either in terms of any of the green spaces within the park. And then moving on to the transport strategy, you asked about, about that. The transport strategy was something that was devised at the time that the main stand application was approved and, and has been revived and monitored and upgraded over the number of years. Essentially, one of the key ways of actually preventing people coming to the stadium in their car is to limit the amount of car parking that's been prepared, that is available at the site and having the residents' car parking zone in place. The residents' car parking zone was strengthened and extended as a result of the main stand application and car parking was provided within Stanley Park and on the site on Otting Avenue, strictly controlled by the club through pre-sale of tickets, match day tickets and car, associated car parking. Alongside that, the club has been working very closely with the city council, transport providers and Mersey Travel to ensure that public transport facilities for access to the stadium are enhanced and provided at as good a level as can be achieved to maximise the number of people who arrive by bus, by coach, by taxi towards the stadium, sorry, and also by rail at Sandhill Station. There's also an enhanced, there was an enhanced walking route put in place between the stadium and the city centre. Some people do actually walk back to the city centre post-match in particular. So the, the facts and figures that have arisen as the transport strategy has been monitored over the number of years since the main stand was constructed clearly do demonstrate that a significant number of people are now using sustainable transport modes to actually get to the stadium. And there has been an overall reduction in car usage for people attending matches at Anfield. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Dave Cummings to ask his question next, please?
Thank you Chair. I have two questions to ask. I'm seeking clarity on the issue of the consultation. Not necessarily in regards to the stadium development, but the events, the extra events, is it six or eight extra events? This was raised some years back and I raised the same question. This is a football stadium, it's not an event stadium. And I want to know what the feedback was around the extra events beyond the football matches. Because approximately Liverpool play some 18 league matches and other cup matches. So they, the local residents have to put up with a lot. And one extra point that I'm looking for clarity on is in the proposals where it says development proposals. It's on page five, application of site. And then it says, the application site covers an area of 6.58 hectares of land, mostly in the club's ownership. So who, who else owns the land beyond the club?
Right, okay. Thank you councillor Cummings. Yes, I do, I do recall questions relating to consultation and to major events previously. I can confirm that the major events were quite explicitly set out in terms of the consultation material that was shown the two events that were referred to by Andy Hughes. So there was a board which actually indicated within the stadium, that we had in our stadium consultation showing that major events were being proposed as part of the application proposals. That's set out in the community engagement strategy that's provided as part of the application. It's one of the background documents. The consultation, the response to additional events at the stadium was largely very positive. And I think it was around 85% overall and then approximate, and almost 75% support for, from locals for concerts and major events to continue to be held at the stadium. In terms of the clarification, in terms of the application site, it is principally in the ownership of the club. The part that wasn't in the ownership of the club actually is Anfield Road because Anfield Road, as you are aware, is currently a public highway. So that is the, that part of the land which is not in the club's ownership. The rest of it is owned by, by the club.
Thank you. Councillor, Dave Cummings, want to come back again?
Oh, thank you Chair.
Councillor Hanson, please.
Thanks, Sam. Can I ask for clarification? In relation to events, you said that Anfield Road is only closed on the day of the, day of the events and being sold because when the events are taking place, there's heavy equipment got to be moved in. And the road is closed prior to the, the day of the events and the day after the events have moved the equipment itself. And secondly, leading on from a question from Anna. In relation to transport, and I understand and recognise you have a transport committee. I think your comment was that you detected no increase in supporters using cars. But my experience is somewhat different. I'm a councillor in Kirkdale. And with the addition of the, the new stand, I'm certainly experiencing extra parking issues and extra parking problems outside the parking zone, so the side of Stanley Road, Flower Street and round there. So has any discussion, any debate took place within, within your transport committee about the the extra cars that will come into the area? No question about that. You know, the amount is debated, but we certainly get extra cars and certainly the Kirkdells as well are going to feel the overspill. So is any discussion, debate took place within your transport group to alleviate those issues? Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. In terms of the first point relating to the closure of Anfield Road, you are correct in that when a large event, a major event is at the stadium, then there will be some additional road closures to actually manage gaining access, you know, setting up the event and then closing down the event afterwards. So that does occur. So there is an extended road closure around some of the major events that, that occur in the summer. In terms of the cars and car access as a result of increased capacity at the stadium, yes, there has been extensive discussion with the city council highways department regarding the effectiveness of the football match parking zone and whether or not it's necessary for that to be, to be changed. The view on that is that you get to a sort of an optimum level of what a football match parking zone is in terms of the effect that it has on cars coming into the area. And if people do drive to the stadium, they will need to park some considerable distance away. And the further away you travel from the stadium and outside the football match parking zone, then the effects of additional car parking is dissipated. So people then kind of, will then actually take a view on whether or not to travel by sustainable travel modes, which can get you very close to the stadium, or park some considerable distance away and walk to the stadium. Some will do that, that's acknowledged. But in terms of the discussions we've had with the highway authority, they're satisfied that the football match parking zone as currently exists is satisfactory and a satisfactory deterrent to discourage too many people actually driving towards the stadium on a match day.
Thank you. Can I just add like a supplementary to that? I was, I actually drove past Liverpool's ground yesterday and Anfield Road was closed then. Will it be closed while all the work is being taken place? Or will you find a way of having it open while the work is taking place?
It is currently, it will be closed for the duration of the works. There's a temporary road closure that it's, a lot of construction projects actually obtain to enable works actually to be carried out so that it will actually be closed for the duration of the works.
I ask that question because I think the consultation went very well. And one of the big things that you gained or the local residents gained was by having found, you know, found a way to keep it open. And I just think it's important that everything is open and honest and clear. And it was being closed for, well, two summers, I think it was basically, while the stand actually gets built. I think we do need to say that kind of thing, although equally, I have to say thanks for finding a way of keeping the road open permanently apart from our match and other performance days, et cetera. So that was, that point I wanted to make, okay?
Thank you very much Chair. I think it's helpful to point out perhaps as well, or useful to point out that one, the main stand was being constructed, Anfield Road was also closed for the duration of that construction period too. And then of course it was reopened.
I think we have councillor Maloney next for your question, please.
Thank you Chair. Good morning. Couple of points, sorry they're a bit technical. I think it should be commended for the inclusion of solar power within the scheme. And I was wondering in that regard, And I was wondering, in that regard, could you tell us what the capacity of the solar power generation is? What percentage that is of the ground's standard electricity use? And whether there's any possibility of increasing the acreage or square meterage of the solar cells in the future? I've got a couple of other questions, I don't know whether you want to address those first or you want me to go through everything?
Right, well, I don't think I can actually answer the question in detail, because you're right, it's an incredibly technical question councillor Maloney, and obviously not something that I was anticipating. Clearly, the club has a major initiative, you've seen reds going green and is committed to increase, to reducing its carbon footprint and increasing the amount of sustainable operations within the stadium. So there's quite a lot of initiatives that it has in place internally on an operational point of view, but as, you know, the matters that you've identified, solar power, for example, wastewater collection, I can't tell you the specific details that you've asked in terms of what percentage that is, and it would take me a little bit of time unfortunately to get that information to hand, we can provide it to you if you're interested, but I don't know if Andy wanted to come in and just talk a little bit about the club's commitments too, it's, you know, it's greening commitments there.
Yeah, no, thanks, Sam. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to say that I don't think it's realistic to just look at the stand in isolation, but the club overall is working really hard to a net carbon zero footprint. We've switched to green energy contracts and we've got a lot, a lot of work going on at the club across a large number of initiatives. And we expect to announce something in the near future in terms of our green commitments on energy.
Okay, thanks for that. I would, although it's not strictly relevant to this application, I would welcome your comments about your future commitment to greening the club. But going back to the more relevant questions, I wonder in terms of the car parking that is available or is going to be made additionally available or changed or upgraded or whatever, whether there's going to be any provision for electric car chargers in the scheme? And whether that's going to be slow and fast charging? I appreciate it's very difficult to provide these facilities, given the lack of common standards, but I think some kind of commitment in this regard would be welcome, both in terms of the green credentials of the scheme and the club achieving its carbon neutrality.
At the moment, we don't have any green, any electric car charging points as part to the point, part of the scheme, but the club is actually looking into that. And certainly there's no reason why we couldn't look at green charger, sorry, electric charging points within the development. I think it's more likely that they would be within the club's demise rather than ones into Stanley Park, but I'm sure that that's something that the club could look into, because Stanley Park, as you know, is owned by the city council, it's not owned by the club.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And my last point, your question, is about cycle parking. I know from the report that this hasn't been decided yet and will be, there will be some discussion about, about the agreed cycle parking going, going on as the scheme develops. And I would welcome this and I would think that it would be advantageous to have good cycle parking facilities to encourage people for all the reasons we, good reasons we know to use their bikes and to have that convenient, not stuck across, you know, the far side of Stanley Park. But, so that's more of a request than a question.
Yes, well, there is already a cycle hub, I'm pleased to say, within the stadium, sorry, within the stadium, within the demise. It's currently on the Anfield, within the Anfield Road car parking area, so there isn't going to be a new location for a cycle hub. Some people do actually cycle to matches, as I discovered when I was actually at the, at some of the consultation events, but obviously the stadium is, is a venue, a place where people actually go on non-match days too. You know, it attracts quite a lot of visitors on non-match days. And the club and the city council, I think collectively, are quite keen to encourage this, particularly because of those linkages with Stanley Park as well. So it is important that we do provide car, sort of cycle parking facilities for people who want to visit on match and on match days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lake, please, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Regarding non-car modes of, of transport, the Canada Dock branch line, which runs from north to south of the city, crosses Utting Avenue about, well, probably less than a mile from the ground. It's currently a freight train line, but was there any feasibility study carried out by yourselves or did you join in any such study to investigate whether that line could be open for passengers? And in fact, could there be a passenger station at the point where it crosses Utting Avenue? Because if football fans were able to alight there, it would vastly reduce the number of people travelling to the vicinity of the ground by car?
Thank you councillor Lake. The, with regard to that, the rail line there, that's something that I, I know as the boot of the branch line, and it's something that's been looked at for, since I started working with the club over 20 years ago, it was something that was muted as a potential route to enable passengers to actually attend matches to the, to the stadium. There's an extensive amount of work being carried out by Mersey Travel and others, looking at what capacity that could have to carry passengers, not just to the stadium, but also around the city as well. And actually, it has actually relatively limited capacity in terms of the rolling stock and also the ability for it to be upgraded for passenger carrying and is not a cost effective, you know, we're talking many, many millions of pounds for that to be upgraded. And it has been looked at on a number of occasions and discounted on a number of occasions as a potential facility for, for upgrading to passenger transport. And as I say, not just by the club, but the club were involved in some of the discussions, but it was something that was discounted by, by Mersey Travel and others. The other thing I just wanted to say, a bit of clarity to councillor Maloney, I've just had a message telling me that the amount of cycle parking we're providing is three times what's currently there, so I have the Maloney's question, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, the members? Councillor Merritt?
Morning, Sam. I just wanted to have it clarified, when the work starts, all the trucks that are used in the demolition and expansion and everything, will they be on the Anfield Road compound site, as what you're saying now, or will they be put into Stanley Park car park up at the top? Will you be using Stanley Park car park?
To gain access to the, for the construction vehicles.
The demolition and everything, yeah, yeah. You know, the ones that have got to stay there on, you know, on site on the work.
There will be very few vehicles that will need to stay there, there'll, there'll be a construction strategy and construction routes agreed with the city council for the best, using the main routes to get to the site for, for the works when they're carried out. As I understand it, obviously they'll take the most direct routes, likely via, that are away from residential areas as far as possible, to Queen's Drive and the motorway network that way, and likely to come up of Utting Avenue and some will come through Stanley Park, but there'll be and along the parts of, part of Anfield Road to get to the edge of the construction site. Some of them may be held in Stanley Park car park for periods of time. So the idea, as I say, is that they are kept away from the residential areas as far as possible.
The one reason I'm asking this, Sam, is because obviously we're a few months away from another season starting, we're not going to go on for another couple of years yet. So if they're parked on that car park, it's going to reduce the capacity for the car park on match days?
Ah, well, it'll be managed in a way that there won't be construction vehicles around on, on match days. You seem to recall that when they were, when they built the main stand, obviously it had to be managed so that the stadium could continue to operate on match days, so activity clearly doesn't, isn't carried out on match days. Parts of Stanley Car Park, Stanley Park car park will be used for the construction compound, so that won't be available throughout the duration of the, of the construction period. But other than that, the remainder of the car park will be available on match days as currently exists.
Okay, second question, sorry, Jim. Second question, Sam, is it's a bit of a follow-up to councillor Hanson's query earlier. Anfield at the moment, Sam, is at saturation point with vehicles on match days, it really is. It's now spreading into the like the Kirkdale, Chubruke, Clubmore, you know, they're suffering as well. Obviously, the Transport Working Group are looking at all options and all that. Can I make a plea that there's some sort of like park and ride? You look at every option, because I had a long chat with Andy Dingwall yesterday and it was made clear to me that, like you said earlier, the more car parking spaces that are, you create, the more cars will come to the match, so that defeats the object. There's also a difficulty in clamping these cars and getting rid of these cars and everything. So there's got to be some sort of scheme that, you know, brings these people to the football and not using the cars, you know, park and ride could be something, I don't know. Thing is, as well, and it's just a comment, on the Transport Working Group, there's no councillor on the Transport Working Group, so we've got no say. I'd like that to be amended, but even if it was only one councillor to represent our thoughts on the Transport Working Group.
Okay, well, if I, if I just address that point first, the, the makeup of the Transport Working Group, I think is something that was decided with, with the city council, so that, that's something obviously to address, you see, you've been speaking to Andy Dingwall about that, so that's perhaps something to address with him. In terms of park and ride, there is a park and ride system and the park and ride system actually is links in with the city centre, which of course is the main hub for public transport into, in and out of the city. So you've got access obviously to Lime Street Station, there's obviously a significant amount of car parking within the city centre, principally available at match, on match days, because that's obviously not peak times when that parking is used within the city centre. And there's the, the bus routes that actually bring people from the city centre out towards the stadium and then back again post-match. So that is the park and ride system that's in place and that has been very effective in terms of reducing car parking, I think, within the area, because people now know that there is that, there is that service that's in operation on a match day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, another plus of the consultation was that you're putting the compound car park, you're like, on the, not on the grassland of Stanley Park, on the existing car park instead, that's another plus. Is there anybody else wants to ask any questions from our members? Mike, do you think it would make sense to bring Lorna in while we have Sam and Andy here, so they can possibly answer Lana's points as well? Because there's some might want to raise as well.
That would be sensible, please, Chair.
Lana, Lana should go next.
Thank you. So this is my message. Save our trees. Now, as a local councillor, an elected representative of Anfield Ward, I want to object to this development. To be clear, my objection is not about the expansion of the stadium per se, but about the public realm design and the encroachment of LFC onto Stanley Park. Stanley Park, a grade two listed historic park designed by renowned landscape architect Edward Camp, was opened in 1870, 22 years before the founding of LFC. The park was created with public interest at its heart and a deep appreciation of the natural world. This park created for public benefit remains for public benefit. Over 150 years, it has been loved by citizens in this city. I'm concerned about the felling of the 16 trees at the border of LFC Stanley Park. The Arboro Cultural Assessment states that three of these trees are A category trees, which means they have at least 40 years of life in them. Five are category B. Only two are classified as U, which means dying. I spent hours studying all of this. These trees provide shelter from the sand, they absorb carb, carbon, they help cleanse pollution from the air and they shield us from traffic on Anfield Road. They are their own ecosystems, a home to many squirrels, that I saw just at the weekend, and birds, including robins, blackbirds, starlings, jays and chivchavs. Looking at the final plans, I was highly alarmed, I only received them last week and they were inaccurate. Even now, if you look at the tree removal and retention plan, the table does not include all the trees that are marked for felling that are on drawing. The final plans were not available to the public last week. People simply don't know about this. There's a clear lack of transparency and democracy in this process around this particular element, and this is the element, only this element, that I'm objecting to. Anfield residents and the wider public of Liverpool have relied on successful public consultation that was run by LFC prior to the pandemic, I was at that consultation as well. In that consultation, there was not the slightest mention of felling of trees. The public, the residents and myself have been misled. Another issue is the aberration of the historic design of the park through the instalment of two new entrances between the LFC site and Stanley Park. Why are we allowing our beloved historic public park to be changed to enable the expansion of a profit-driven corporation? Can we truly rely on the expertise of contemporary landscape designers contracted to aid LFC's growth plans? I do not trust this profit-driven development will provide us with a better design for the public realm and keep public benefit at its heart. Now, experience fuels my doubts. In 2016, LFC planted trees as a part of their first main stand expansion. Eleven of these trees are now being marked down for felling too. They are indeed in a dire state, for they are designer trees. They are planted to serve something else other than public benefit. They were planted to serve this great football club and its profit-making machine. So do we really want to sacrifice the mature, beautiful trees in Stanley Park we have now in order to feed this machine? The council have decided to entrust their parks, including Stanley Park, to fields in trust. This means there should be no building on green land and our parks should be kept for public use in perpetuity. So I ask for the plans around the LFC Stanley Park interface to be reconsidered and redrawn in proper consultation with the people of Anfield and Liverpool. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Lana. I thought, the reason I brought you in then is because I thought it was really important that somebody raised those points. I don't think we should be glossing over them. As I said earlier on, I think everybody needs to open and notice completely about this. And I think the latest figure we had is 27 trees. Mike, are we able to put Sam and Andy on the screen so I can see who I'm talking to as well, please? It would be a big help.
Chair, they can come back on.
And also give them a chance to answer. So I think that's really important. I'll go on from that as well, because I think, I think there are also two or maybe even three already existing paths off Stanley Park into the area of Anfield Road. There's one where your camera television facility is, there's one basically parallel or level with the Kenny Dalgleish stand, and there's one next to the main stand entrance as well. So I'm just wondering, what was your logic in going for another one, basically in the middle of the new Anfield Road stand? And looking at these trees, a lot of them are just inside the boundary, they're actually at the bottom of the garden of the houses that were previously in Anfield Road, so that's why they're in your ownership. But there are a handful which are over the boundary on the Stanley Park side, as Lana's just referred to. And I think we need to get some sort of answer on exactly why you've decided you need another access point to the back of that stand. I can ask you on that, please?
Yes, if I can respond to that particular point, there are a number of points obviously raised by councillor Simmich there. In terms of the additional access points into Stanley Park, this is actually consistent with the Anfield regeneration strategy. In terms of the additional access points into Stanley Park, this is actually consistent with the Anfield regeneration strategy, supplementary planning document that is adopted by the city council, which is to actually increase this connectivity from Walton Brook Road into Stanley Park and encourage that movement. So it's not a necessity in that sense, it's the fact that there's an opportunity to increase the amount of entrances into Stanley Park, which will actually encourage people to move between the park, past the stadium, through the public realm and onto Walton Brook Road, as I've indicated. So that, that's the reason why there's additional pedestrian routes into Stanley Park being proposed. In terms of the tree removal, I've already explained the number of trees that are being removed. And councillor Simmich referred to those around the outside broadcast, broadcast area, sorry, that were planted with the main stand, that's eleven trees. She's writing that they are struggling a little bit in terms of the particularly windy regime at that part of the site. But actually, they do need to be removed to allow the outside broadcast area to be enlarged, to meet UEFA requirements, as I previously indicated. And they will be replaced in slightly more sheltered positions along the park boundary and along the western edge of the new, the extended outside broadcast area. In terms of trees on the boundary with Stanley, Stanley Park, I understand that two of those trees are dead or dying and six of them do need to be removed because of they're in poor condition or they're in danger of actually potentially losing limbs in the future. The ash trees in particular that are within the park are owned by the city council. The club has actually worked very closely with the tree officers of the council to actually identify and modify the plans as, as much as possible to retain trees and put forward arboretal cultural method statements to ensure that as many trees as possible can be protected. The tree removal plans were amended following discussions with council officers. And that was only occurred unfortunately quite late in the process and the correct plans are available on the council's website. The application from the outset did indicate that a number of trees would be lost and that was quite clear. The number has changed slightly, but it's not significant in terms of the context of the overall tree loss and removal relating to the development. And then if I just kind of, I've already said that there actually isn't any physical works in Stanley Park other than these two new points of access. Councillor Simmich made some comment about contemporary design relating to the park. I'm, I'm sure she's, she's aware, as most members will be, that Stanley Park has been regenerated in recent years. When I first started working on the project in around two thousand, the park was grade two, a grade two historic landscape. As a consequence of the work collectively between the city council and the club and the current designers who are working with the club, it's now a grade two star historic landscape. And that's a result of the works that, as I say, the design that's been produced by, by the current designers for the scheme. So I, I hope in that sense councillor Simmich is satisfied that, that, that the more modern interventions are clearly accepted and have actually made a valuable contribution to the appearance of the park as it stands now. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think one of the points is that you are looking to plant more trees to replace the ones that we're losing. And going through the report, I, I found that some, I think it was West Ham's new ground have got green walls where they, they use trees as their perimeter. And that seemed like a decent idea. I also thought, Mike, maybe this could be an opportunity to do more in terms of helping the development of Stanley Park. I saw that there were buildings like the Bowling Green Pavilion, for example, had been taken away and not put back. There were some of the ones as well. And when I looked at the lake, I thought that could have been a bit better. But I, I see there's an opportunity where you can put, I know these things aren't that you have to do. But I think it would be a good opportunity to do a bit more than you have to do and be a really good neighbour. Because what we have to do today in this meeting, we have to balance that all the pluses that have been mentioned about the employment, the better facilities and so on and so forth, and negative aspects, particularly with regard to those trees, but also with regard to the six events. Again, that's a plus in the consultation where that's been reduced from twelve, incidentally. So they're my points. I don't know if you want to add, answer any of them or not.
Sorry, Andy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, look, I just wanted to put some of this in context because the club has been investing significant sums into Stanley Park over many years and was responsible for the restoration of the park. And we've actually spent over twenty million pounds on the restoration of Stanley Park. And this proposal as well provides for us investing more in trees and more into the park than the trees that are impacted by this development. So I just wanted to make the point that we've made really significant contributions to the park and continue to take it very seriously.
Thanks, Andy. If I can, if I can just add to that, in terms of, I, I realise that, I think the Friends of Stanley Park made some comment in particular about some structures that were removed from the park when it was upgraded, when the restoration actually took place. There, there were, I think, two structures that were removed and were not actually replaced when the restoration took place. And that was actually agreed as part of the park restoration scheme that was agreed with Historic England and the city council. And as I've indicated, the park at the time, prior to restoration, was a grade two landscape. And as a consequence of the regeneration scheme that was actually carried out, it is now a grade two star landscape. So actually the quality, the, the rating of the park has now actually been increased as a result of those works. Again, recognizing the commitment of the football club in, in consultation with the city council and Historic England to actually improving the park for, for the, the local community, for the people of Liverpool. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam and Andy. I think you've gone a substantial way to answering most of Lana's criticisms anyway. Again, just one point I wanted to mention, I think the most significant one of all the things was Historic England saying they had no problem with this because basically the outline permission had been given, what, six, seven years ago? And it's just following on from that. Do you think we're at the point to, to move the vote at this? I think we had an extensive discussion.
Councillor Prince, there's a number of stages to go yet at this stage. We have councillors Hanson and Cummings have indicated, and also we will then hear in detail from the case officer and from Highways.
Both councillor Hans.
Thanks, Sam. There's Sam gone, disappeared.
I am still here, listening.
Welcome back. To what I'm listening to today, clearly the, there's a general consensus that there's support for what you're doing and you're moving forward and that kind of stuff. And certainly the, the stuff that's been done by all the partners on Stanley Park is more than welcome. Yeah, because twenty years ago, Stanley Park was in a fairly poor state. And it's come back and it's being used now by the people of, of North Liverpool. It's twenty years ago it wasn't. So well done for being put into that. My, my take on it is that the, the tree issue is whether it's been there by design, whether it's by, you know, an assumption and that the residents have only just found out about the, the plans to take down the, that they've done with the trees. And you've said to the disease and the, the rest are okay. But we need that for access, for, for whatever reason. And you've mentioned in terms of the parts of the regeneration plan to open up that to allow more access into the park. Can I ask since the, my understanding, I may be corrected, that it's only the last week, last fortnight, that this issue has raised its head. Can I ask, has the, the powers that be within Anfield gone back and revisited the, the particular issue that's been raised? And is there any way, shape or form that you could actually go back and revisit that and come up with another plan that may help save those trees? Because clearly, whether we like it or we dislike it, you know, people have an affection for trees. You know, and, and they see that as part of their, not only their history, but part of their future going on as well. So, you know, given this only just raised its head in the last fortnight, and my understanding, I can, I can be corrected. Have you gone away or can you go away and revisit the issue to see if there's another way around the, the, the issue that perhaps maybe protects some or all those trees?
Okay, yes.
Helping a prayer one, yeah.
Thank you for the question. Just, just to clarify, when the application was submitted, the plans showed the removal of twenty trees. So the, the club's landscape team, our arboretal culturalist, felt that twenty trees would need to be removed to facilitate the development or needed to be removed because of their condition. The, the council's own tree officer and our arboretal culturalist provided feedback on the plans relatively lately and indicated that they felt further trees needed to be looked at for removal. Over the past three or four weeks, there has been extensive discussions with the, between the council's team and the club's team. And that has resulted in some changes to the public realms, minor changes to the public realm, which have enabled further trees to, that the council's officers felt were at danger of having to be removed to be retained, subject to a, a method statement of working around those trees. I think it's fair to say that the, the council's arboretal culturalist is perhaps taking a more cautious view than the clubs. The club, the club's team were content that of the seven trees that have now been agreed to remove, the majority of those actually could have been retained, following, potentially could have been retained following measures in terms of construction around them. The council's advisers have taken a different view and the club have accepted the, the view that the council's advisers have taken and as a consequence have therefore agreed to plant further trees within their own land and make a significant commuter sum payment as a worst case scenario to, to mitigate the loss of up to twenty-seven trees overall. But as I say, the difference between what was submitted and what we're now looking at is seven trees. It's not the twenty-seven that perhaps councillor Hanson and others might have felt was the issue. It is an additional seven trees that are being lost.
Yes, Joe.
Thanks, Sam. Just to clarify for me and for the rest of the committee, it is the, the council officers who are recommending that the seven trees that you wanted to leave there, they're recommending that you take them out.
It, it's been done as a process of negotiation and discussion with councillors, council officers, that, that's fair to say. I, I think, you know, the club felt that some of those trees could, could be retained, but the council, I think that the, the condition in particular of two of the trees is the council officers felt that they would, would not, or even if they survived, that there was a potential danger of those trees in the future. There's two large ash trees, for example, that they felt could potentially lose limbs, which, which might be endangered in the future. And so it was their preference that those trees be removed. And so it, it has been a process of negotiation over a number of weeks that has led us to this final position of saying, okay, you know, this is the worst case scenario, so how do we then mitigate it? And you'll see in the late report by your officers that actually we now are in a position where your officers, including the woodland, including the tree officers, do accept the scheme and support the scheme because of the mitigation that's being offered.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Councillor Cummings, your next. Thank you, Chair. I was the first one to raise my hand. So councillor Hanson has touched on a lot of subjects that I want to deal with. So instead of going round in circles, I'll try and focus on my concerns. It was mentioned that, what, what we were just talking about then, about the consultation with council officers and the negotiations around the removal of trees. Now, from what I can gather about, in your response, what you've said there, is that there was a negotiation. So that says to me that some council, some council officers were not happy with the removal of these trees. So that's what I have an issue with. Furthermore, furthermore, Liverpool Football Club, I think they started in eighteen ninety-two. And, you know, they have this air of the people's club and suchlike. You're gonna get, you're gonna get more support if you deal with this issue of the tree issue that has been raised along the lines of what councillor Simmich has, has raised. If you go back to the local residents, you go back to the local people and negotiate with them to see if they are happy with this tree issue. In that context, I would support this planning application. I'm not, I'm not going to support this planning application if you do not engage with the public around the full planning application. Because what, what I'm feeling here is a massive amount of smoke and mirrors ambiguity. And let's be clear, I, I, I like a lot of the issues what you've raised about the changing of the planning application. The issue I, I don't like is the smoke and mirrors of throwing more information about the, the removal of trees. That's what I'm not happy about. So I'm, I'm pleading with you to go back to the public and have a further consultation on that issue. Because from what I can gather here, to keep some trees is not gonna, not gonna impede in this planning application, not at all. Thank you councillor Cummings. I think now there's no further contributions from members. Now we do go on to the revision of, to conditions, I collect, Mike?
Thank you, Chair. There's a detailed note to circulate to members of the committee with various revisions to committees. If I could suggest the Chair invite the case officer to now introduce and summarise issues within the report and to address the issues raised during the course of debate, please.
Yes, indeed. We'll, we'll now indeed call on the case officer to summarise everything, please, for this.
Got there in the end. Thank you, Chair. I'm Felicity Collins. I'm the case officer for the application. And thank you to the councillors and the applicant there for a very thorough presentation and what I think has been a very thorough debate, debate of the issues around this application. It is, it is a major application and it's, it's a complicated one with a, a long history. I think just to kind of, I, I won't go through, you've got a very extensive report in front of you and an update note, which I'll come to in a minute. And I think the debate has, has covered quite a lot of the detail, so I won't go through that again. Just in terms of, just picking up very briefly though, in terms of the comments that have been made about transport and parking and measures that wouldn't be in place. In the report in front of you, you'll see detailed at section six and particularly paragraph six point ten. There are a number of the, the measures set out there in, in a table which give you an idea of the, the work that's been ongoing through the transport strategy and the Transport Working Group in terms of the actual measures that are being taken to reduce car travel and, and, and reduce the reliance on, on car parking around the site. I think the, the point on energy provision has been picked up and will, if, if we receive further information from the club on that, we can pass that on. In relation to the trees, I think it's been covered in quite a lot of detail in the discussion that we've just had. In summing up, I suppose, the, the report that you've got in front of you, the tabled update, provides the detail that's just been discussed in relation to the increase from twenty trees to seven trees. It is unfortunate that this is, this has come up sort of later in the process. And the officers' advice has been taken by the club where the, the development proposal is inevitably going to have some impact on the trees at the boundary because although the development doesn't encroach on the park and, and for, for most extents, the hard surfacing is only going to assimilate limit to where it currently is for the car park. The creation of the two new entrances and works to improve the quality of the hard surfacing on, within the LFC site will involve works within the route protection areas. So that's where effectively the, the council officers, tree officers' opinion differed slightly from that of the, of the clubs in terms of the impact of those works within route protection areas and the, the realistic prospect of trees being undamaged and being able to be retained. So I think we're, we're in a situation where our officers and in, in the planning balance, we are recommending that this, this is an acceptable proposal on the basis that although trees inevitably, inevitably need to be removed, the mitigation is replanting trees in that same location. same location. And the replanting proposal is of a semi-mature standard, so six, six metre sort of high trees, so they would have a reasonably high chance of providing some immediate amenity value, but also have a better chance of their longer term survival and, and contribution. The other thing that's been picked up in consultation responses is the, the boundary line between the park and the club, which was, the railing was replaced, I believe, for the 2016 main stand opening and sort of circumnavigate some of the boundary trees, because as I think, Chair, you noticed that the trees, a number of the trees were back garden trees, so the mansions that were on Anfield Road. So in removing those trees and, and securing a proper replacement planting screen, we can, we can have the railing reoriented to the ownership boundary, which will give a clearer indication of the LFC owned land and LCC. So I think that there's probably not a great deal more that I can say on, on the tree issue. We took a conscious decision that, that reconsultation in the context of this major application for an additional seven trees in a location where we had already undertaken an extensive consultation on, which included removal of trees at the boundary with Stanley Park. So our conscious decision as officers was that to reconsult on an additional seven trees would, would not have advantaged anyone further who, who have already had the chance to make representations, and those representations have been considered in, in the report that you've got in front of you. So, yeah, just turning then to the, the update note, other issues that are covered in the update note in front of you. We have since the publication of the report had the conclusions of the BAT survey. We had had preliminary conclusions in advance of writing the report, but we've had the final survey conclusions and the, there's an additional condition proposed that the recommendations of that, that BAT survey report are, are followed in the construction phase. And I'm just turning to the fourth page, item four, on the, on the update note, is that the additional tree replacement and planting plans would be, would be included in, in the approved documents if, if the application were approved today. The other information that we have received since, since the report was published was agricultural method statements, which is in relation to the trees which the club intends to retain, but where works are proposed within the root protection areas. The club has provided us with detailed working method statements of how those works would be delivered, which was covered, a requirement of condition 13 proposed to be attached to the, the decision. But now those method statements that have been reviewed by our tree officers and found to be acceptable, so should it be approved, we would amend that condition to compliance with those method statements. We have had two, sorry, one further late representation, which is from a disabled supporter of the club, who is a wheelchair user, who has cited their objections to the proposal in relation to the segregation of wheelchair users in terms of the, the concourse area. This is something that was discussed at length with the club in, in the broader context of inclusive access within the, the stand and is covered in the report in quite a lot of detail. I think it's at section, section three. And we did discuss with our inclusive access officer and the club in quite a lot of detail the, the proposals for the wheelchair user lounge being a separate area to the, the main two concourses area, concourse areas which are at ground and, and at first floor, sorry, second floor.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order. Excuse me for butting in, I just feel it's important to raise this. Please forgive me if I've got this right, right or wrong. You're talking about apartheid of people with disabilities being separated from people with no disabilities.
Dave, I think we can let Felicity answer this as she's going through without making an even bigger issue with. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah. It's covered within my report because it was an issue that arose during the assessment of the application and was raised by our own access officer and discussed at length with the club. There are differing views as to whether a separate lounge area or a separate concourse area or a mixed open access to all concourse areas is the right way to deliver this. And the club have, have given us quite a considerable, quite considerable thought as to how the stand works in terms of circulation and where seating is positioned, which is covered in, in my report at section three. So the conclusion of the discussion was that the, the club provided us with a letter of support from the Liverpool Disabled Supporters Association, supporting the, the stand proposals. So with that assurance, officers were reminded to consider that that was a reasonable approach. It's not, it's not, the, the improvement to the seating areas is to provide elevated positions on the top of the lower tier, which is an improvement from the current pitchside only, I believe. And so the consequence of that is that the circulation of the building would, works best if those, those seats access at a separate level basically to the main concourse area. But as I understand it, the club's intention is, they have an ongoing fan, an ongoing dialogue with their Disabled Supporters Association, and they also have a fan sort of feedback, they have a sort of fan feedback liaison and have, and have agreed that they will continue to review how the circulation within, within the new stand would, would work. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think there's anything further to say on that. There's, there's one further condition which we propose to amend, which is just for clarity, which is the last item on the update note, which is to amend the condition so that it states that there'll be no amplified music in the external areas outside of the stadium, which is just to clarify that there wouldn't, doesn't apply to within the stadium.
Thank you very much, Felicity. Gerry, you had another question?
Well, first, I'd like to thank Felicity for the, the report. There must have been an awful lot of hard work gone into this particular attractive and potentially contentious application that's been wandering around. I thought you were doing great until you got to the trees and then all of a sudden the world went ballistic. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the, as, as a council, council officers, we have said that we can't protect these seven trees because I'm making assumptions now that the vehicles entering the, the site will damage the trees or the tree roots at the consequence. Our tree officers think that we need to take them down just to be on the safe side. Am I, am I on that assumption?
It's not down to the vehicles, it's the, so there are hard surfaced areas at the moment, so the Anfield Road car park is, is tarmac. But to deliver the development proposals that the, that are in front of you, you'd be creating two new entrances, so you've got to dig down a sub base and install your new hard surfacing on those locations, so that would impact on tree roots. And then where the tarmac areas are being replaced with new, new materials, again, you'd have to dig down to create the, you know, a sub base to build up the, the levels that you would need to deliver the public realm. At the back of that, there's a, there's a new sort of wall that goes, that edges the new public realm. So to construct the wall, you would need the area for the wall plus some working area behind. So effectively where, where the additional losses or where the losses along the boundary are, it's, it's effectively where either the tree is in the location where the new entrances are going or the tree roots, we, the works proposed would affect too large an area of the tree roots to realistically give a prospect that that tree can be retained. Is that clear?
Okay, thank you. I've got a question, the highways, I'll come back to you.
Anna, can you be the last questioner, please?
Thank you, Chair. Just about the replacement planting of those trees, will every single tree be replaced in, in the ratio of two new trees of the same calibre to every one tree lost?
So the replacement trees falls into two categories. The trees that are within the Liverpool Football Club's ownership, there are 16 trees and those will be replaced with, I'll just double check this, 25, I think is the final number. So those will be replaced within the site and what it would allow the club to do is actually replace that structural boundary planting along the edge, along the back edge of their new public realm and along the edge of our park. And those would be, so that's sort of between one for one and two for one. Our usual policy is a replacement on a ratio of two for one, but in this case, because of the standard of planting that's being proposed, which is a semi-mature, fairly, fairly sizable standard, our tree officer is happy with that quantum of replacement because we get a higher quality of trees. The other trees that would need to be reprovided would be the Liverpool City Council owned trees, which are the ones that fall just over the boundary into the park and they are on the boundary. Those would be replaced by ourselves by way of securing a financial contribution from Liverpool Football Club. So that's what the agent was referring to in the presentation in terms of a, a worst case scenario is being provided for, and that's on a scale of a contribution per 10 centimetre diameter of tree lost. So a bigger tree would say, a more mature tree might be replaced by five, a financial contribution for five trees. So the, the tree officers provided a formula that we would include within the legal agreement.
Can we just go back?
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so I just, I just don't understand, why, why is it that Liverpool Football Club are being sort of like let off the usual obligation of replanting two for one?
I, I don't think it's let off as such, it's, it's, the planting plan gives an opportunity for the football club to replace the structural planting and, and provide a scheme that will complement both the park and the public realm that they're proposing. The two for one replacement is obviously a sort of a starting point, but if, if the quality of provision is of a, of a high standard, our tree officers can take a view that that's, that is sufficient to meet the policy requirements, even though it's not the same number, the quality would be, would be of a higher standard. And in that respect, it's, it's considered to be acceptable.
As Joe said a little earlier, I also would like to thank you for fully interesting and extensive reports and everybody who made a contribution to writing that, as I thought it was just so thorough and so balanced as well. I've now got to ask Andy Dingwall to make some comments, please.
Can you hear me and see me okay?
We can hear you. Thank you, Andy, if you would proceed.
Okay. I think, I think a lot of points have already been covered in the discussions between members and the applicant and, you know, I don't want to sort of reiterate a lot of the points that were made in response to those questions. Essentially, the, the transport strategy for the, for the club is one of suppressing demand for travel by private car use. So the amount of car parking is limited, in fact, the number of car parking spaces will actually be reduced as part of this proposal, which will further suppress demand for travel by car. And to complement that, there's a whole host of initiatives through the transport strategy that's been in place for a number of years now that encourage more sustainable travel, walking, cycling, and in particular maximising the use of public transport, including the park and ride facilities. One of the points that was made in relation to the football match parking zone, I, I can't, I kind of understand the fact that people will park just outside of the zone, but there's got to be a limit as to where that zone, a boundary runs. At the moment, the extent of the area covers what we, what we'd expect a 20 minute walk time. So you can't really park freely within the area, you know, and walk to the stadium in less than 20 minutes. So that again reduces the attractiveness of travelling to the stadium by car and then walking that distance. People would tend to look at alternative modes at that point. I would also add that as part of the main stand expansion, the football match parking zone was actually increased in size and there were some additional areas that were introduced to cover parts which, which did suffer from, you know, matchday car parking. So that, that will also help to suppress demand for car parking in the area. And furthermore, since the events permission was granted, the times of operation and the days of operation of the football match parking zone were increased as well to cover all eventualities, events and matches as well. But there's not much more I really need to add. I mean, I suppose if there's any questions from members, I'd be happy to answer that. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Andy. We have a question from councillor Hanson, of course.
Good on Colford, yeah, nevertheless. It's nice to see that you couldn't turn up, Andy, you stayed away where you're safe and you're whatever. Couple, couple of questions. In terms of the, the officers just gone through why we, we couldn't save the trees because of the excavation and all that kind of stuff and whatever. My question to highways with, with all their skills and all their knowledge and all their experience, couldn't design something that could protect those trees moving forward. I'm sure you can, you can answer that, but it's a question. In terms of the, the issue that we have currently in the Kirkdale wards and Sheebrook wards is the, with the, the new stand being built, we, we suffered the impact because as has already been said around Anfield, it's at saturation point. So the extra spans coming in using that stand, there's a spillover and there's a spillover into Kirkdales and Sheebrooks and wherever. Of course, with the new stand and the extra 7,000 capacity, the, the, most of the measures that you're talking about here are already in place in one way, shape or form. So we have, in Kirkdale, we have a bus service that runs from the trains down to, down to Groundville, down to Everton, but we see growing numbers of fans walking on Scotland Road up to, to, to Anfield in particular, not necessarily Everton, but certainly for Liverpool. And they are parking in, in the box hall area and on Stanley Road and the Flower Streets and whatever. Did, did I hear you say that the park, that the parking zones are going to be extended into the Kirkdales of this world? I know we have the issue with Bramley Moor, but I'm assuming that the, the Anfield project will be finished before the Bramley Moor project finishes. So I've got my own concern and I flagged them up with you recently in terms of the Flower Streets, Stanley Road, getting my state park and what are we going to do in the short term? Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Chair. As I've just mentioned, the, the football match parking zone is defined now. It was, it was, it was increased in size as part of the, the main stand expansion, which at the time included the outline application for the Anfield Road stand, so accounted for that potential extra demand that would have existed. There's no intention as part of this particular application under consideration today to further extend the area covered by the football match parking zone. There's not proposed to be any changes to that. As I've mentioned before, the transport strategy is, has been established now for a number of years and there's a, there's a raft of measures there that we will be working with the club to maximise opportunities to encourage people to travel more sustainably, improving the capacity of the buses, for example, that's one thing, making, making sure taxi ranks are better located, that's another aspect. But it's all kind of set out in the report there, but it's kind of really just pushing on a little bit further than, than what exists at the moment, but no proposals to change the FMPZ boundary.
Thank you, Andy. Your last question on this, please, Joe, okay?
Andy, thanks for that. Can I ask, was the extension of the
Can I ask, was the extension of the parking zone ever considered? And if it was considered, was a report produced? And if there was a report produced, can I see a copy of the report, please? Certainly if that discussion took place, there was no discussion or debate with the elected members living in the affected areas.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Chair. It was considered, but it was considered at the time of the original application for the main stand, which also included the outline permission for the Allo Road stand. So in effect, the extension that was introduced at that point took into account the extra demand that would have been generated by the Anfield Road stand had it been developed out through the outline permission.
Thanks, Andy. Councillor Lake, can you be the last question on this as well, please?
Thanks, Chair. I'll try and be brief. West Derby Road is one of the main arterial routes to the ground on matchdays. It brings much traffic from the M62 and from the east of the city towards the football grounds. We already know that the West Derby Road cycle lane has caused a tremendous amount of congestion on that road. But I believe that the worst of that congestion has yet to be seen. And I think the worst of that congestion will occur on matchdays when traffic attempting to turn right from West Derby Road into Lower Breck Road will cause a tailback that may well indeed go all the way back to the M62. Have highways considered any modification or remodeling of the cycle lane to prevent the worst congestion that we're probably going to see as a result of the cycle lane?
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Chair. I appreciate that it's loosely related to this application, but the cycle lane really on West Derby Road has been introduced completely independently of this application. It's a highway scheme that is, you know, a response to the COVID pandemic and trying to encourage people to travel more sustainably and give them the option to safely travel about the city by bike. There's been a number of modifications already to that cycle lane as a result of feedback from local councillors and from residents and businesses and suchlike. And we will continue to monitor the way that cycle lane functions, the way it's laid out, et cetera. So it's not something that's specifically directly related to this application. As I've alluded to before, we're not expecting a substantial increase in vehicular traffic over and above that which exists on matchdays as a result of this application. So it wasn't felt appropriate to, you know, assess the cycle lane in terms of the impact of what this development will bring. But what I will do is I'll give a commitment that we'll continue to monitor the cycle lane to ensure that it's appropriate. And if further modifications are needed, perhaps as a result of the traffic that's experienced on matchdays, then we'll give due consideration to doing that at the appropriate time.
Thanks, Andy. And also thanks to Felicity for your contributions. Do you want to make another one now? Okay, yeah?
Sorry, just one last point, Chair. It's just in relation to the recommendation that you have in front of you. We have recently reviewed our fee payments for making the legal agreements. So at point B of the recommendation, point B11, there's a reference to the payment on completion of the legal agreement of 1,500 or equivalent. Our legal fees have been reviewed, so I'm just proposing that we take that figure out of the recommendation and that that's agreed with our legal colleagues as and if and when the agreement is made.
Thank you, Felicity. So we had an extensive discussion on this. I think we've all, we've mentioned all the key points for and against. And as I said a little earlier, our job was to balance what our view is on that. And as such, I think we are now in a position that I can move the recommendation as amended, which is actually on page 70 and 71 of the main agenda. Would that be agreed? Can Mike take it from there, please?
Thank you, Chair. Before I conduct the vote, do any members wish to move an amendment in relation to that recommendation? No? In which case, in terms of voting, just to remind members, I will call out your names by surname individually based on my notes in front of me. I will then turn my microphone off and I will ask you to turn your individual microphone on and clearly indicate your vote. I'll then revert to me and I will move to the next member and so forth. This is purely for clarity on the public record and to make it easier for the live stream. Councillor Hanson, do you have a comment? Are you poised, ready to vote? Thank you, thank you. In which case, I'll take the chair's vote firstly, please.
Four.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Bennett?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Mallat?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Lake, please?
Four.
And Councillor Key?
Against.
That concludes the outcome of voting on this particular application. The outcome of the vote is six in favor, two against, and the application is therefore approved on that basis. Councillors Cummings and Key, your dissent will be recorded by name. With it in mind, we will therefore move on to our next item of business, which is number five on the published agenda and which relates to landboarded by Marlborough Street, Marlborough Place and Pick-up Street, Liverpool Three in Central Ward. Can I also draw members' attention to the urgent supplementary notes circulated with updates to conditions? You will have a number of additional images showing the application site and a surrounding area for your reference, just to assist in terms of consideration during the item. And can I remind any member who leaves the chamber, join consideration of the application, that once you leave the chamber, you will not be able to participate in consideration of this application. With it in mind, I revert to the Chair.
Thank you. I think we have Colin Williams, the agent to speak in favor of this, first of all, please. And also Adam Morgan speaking in favor. Colin.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear and see me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Similar to the last proposal, the architect here will just take you through the slides of the scheme. And then fairly briefly, I will just highlight some of the key planning issues which have obviously focused the attention of the application. Thank you very much. If I can hand over to Adam Morgan, please, the architect.
Yeah, thank you, Colin. Okay, so this is a proposal for a new six-storey residential building in the kind of Marybone area. And it is currently a vacant. It's a completely abandoned site currently. And it sits primarily between two buildings of a kind of student nature. One is seven stories and one is five stories. And you can see on the location plan there, just towards the corner of Marybone in Liverpool City Centre. And it's a proposal of 26 residential units, 23 one-beds and three two-beds. Next slide, please. It's a fairly tight site and it's quite linear. So we had to consider multiple entries into the building. Those are what we would call the rear on Marlborough Street. The ground floor units are entered from street level. They are offset from the street to provide a bit of privacy and protection. And then on the primary elevation, which is on Pick-up Street, the remainder of the units are accessed via a central circulation core, you know, via a reception space. The bin store is located at the point of the street for ease of collection. And there are a couple of bike store areas and a series of central plant spaces as well, which has been coordinated with appropriate professionals. Next slide, please. The floor plans for the upper levels are shown on the left there. And given that the proposals will be sprinkled due to its height, it allows for a bit more of an open plan feel because you don't need protected lobbies within the apartment layouts. And that does make for quite generously sized rooms, actually, all of which meet Part M42 of building regulations and 40% of which meet the most stringent of Part M, which is Part M43. And as you can see, there are only upper levels, predominantly one-bed units, all above minimum space standards. And then the three two-bed units that are mentioned are on the uppermost three levels. And then on the right-hand side of this slide, you'll see a demonstration of all the kind of accessible merits, if you like, that the Part M43 units include things like storage for two wheelchairs, a minimum of a metre space around beds, plenty of clearance in living areas in front of kitchen units and a generously sized bathroom. Couple of little stats on the scheme. There is a 77% provision of bicycles. As I say, 100% of the apartments can be adapted for lifetime requirements. 100% of units meet Part M42 and 40% M43. Next slide, please. And just a quick summary of how we've arrived at the scheme. As you can see there, the transition of the main structures in the street, you've got the seven-story building on the left, five-story on the right, we've just kind of bridged the two. The rear of the building steps down to a three stories to acknowledge the reduced scale on Marlborough Street and mitigate any overbearing issues to those bungalows. It's a simple, kind of rhythmic design with a capped parapet, something similar to like the old buildings and the docks. And as I say, ground floor residential amenity and privacy has been carefully considered. And the principle of the scheme really is just make best use of the site. A slight height bias to the ground floor, just so it feels like a bit more of a plinth. There's access for residents and workers. One of the benefits of having the more open plan fields is we're acknowledging that in a post-COVID world, people will still be wanting to work from home. So we've implemented some desk spaces here and there. We've acknowledged the various massing and style constraints. And as I say, it's a fairly symmetrical and, you know, rhythmic design. And next slide, please, which is the last one. And then that's just a handful of visuals, really, just to give a sense of the look and feel of the scheme. That's it for me.
Thank you, Adam. If I can just highlight some of the, I think, key concerns raised by councillor Small and others. Obviously, we've had a Zoom meeting with councillor Small and went through the scheme. You've got a very fair and balanced report. It covers all the issues in detail. So obviously, you've read the assessments of your offices. Just in terms of the nature of the scheme, there's some question whether this is akin to a student accommodation development. The application is residential. It's a residential scheme in Class C3. And that, if you grant planning permission for the scheme, that's exactly what the use will be. Any student accommodation use of it will require separate planning permission. And you've heard about the apartment size and so on. Every flat meets the national minimum space standards. And if, again, it was a student scheme, we would have smaller units. So we wouldn't be designing apartments of that size and with that generous amount of inclusive access units if it was a student accommodation development. So I hope it's very clear, you not be granting planning for student accommodation development, you're granting planning for standard residential developments, albeit sitting within very much a student accommodation area. In terms of scale, Adam's taken you through the slides. It's amended, you know, the plans that before you today have gone through a series of amendments to reflect the comments of your urban design officer. And you can see, it's kind of knits in between two scales, between Marlborough Street on the bungalows and the adjacent taller student accommodation developments. We've had to consider very carefully the impact on neighboring developments, many of which are student accommodation developments, but also in relation to the bungalows as well and the warehouse. There is a small warehouse next door. It seems it's kind of, it's historic or it is in active use. There's a question whether we could have brought that into the site. It's a private development. It's not within the applicant's gift to bring that into the site. So we had to kind of design around it. And as you've seen, I hope you agree that that's been taken care of very carefully in terms of the way the amended plans have come forward and try and step up the scale between that and the taller developments. We've looked very carefully about also the impact in terms of the agent of change here because it is a residential development come alongside a smaller commercial use. The commercial use is a locksmith. It's a historical. Commercial use has been there, longstanding family business. It's pretty low-key in terms of profile. It's generally one that sells locksmith, you know, goods and so on. So it's not an industrial use. It's not a kind of high-intensive noise activity. And we've explained that back to officers and through the mitigation of acoustic insulation and so on. We do believe that we satisfy the principle of agent of change principles. So you've got there a very fair and balanced report and I hope you will agree with that and recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, thanks, Colin, and thanks, Adam. I think it would be good to bring Nick in, Nick Small, in at this point, if we can, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Can people hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay. First of all, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak on this and thanks also to Colin and Adam and their team. We have met during the planning process and I think we've got a better scheme than we originally had and there have been some significant amendments to that. And we very much welcome that and we very much welcome the engagement with the team, with local councillors and residents on that. And I think it does work. It does show how this can work much more constructively than just having an argument at the planning committee on this. And the concerns that we had as ward councillors and Christine Maria and I put in, an objection to the original application late last year, was mainly around the student accommodation. As members of the planning committee will know, over many, many, many years now, there's been real issues in the Marybone community with student accommodation and over saturation of student residences in the area, which has fundamentally changed the way that the area is and the way that the area works, not for the benefit of longstanding residents. That's recognized in the emerging local plan and that we've reached that saturation point and that we won't have any more student accommodation. And I think the applicants have done everything they can to design this out so it isn't student accommodation and it would need, if it were to change into student accommodation in the future, it would need another planning application. And that's something that we completely welcome as local councillors. We do have, and residents do have, some concerns around overdevelopment in the area. On Midshaw Street at the back of this development, there are a row of bungalows. We've been contacted by many of the residents who live there, concerned about overdevelopment, concerned about the size of this, about overlooking their homes and concerns around sort of noise and antisocial behaviour that may emanate from there. It is a vacant plot at the moment that is developable in some way. You know, I think we have, while we have tried to work constructively, residents do have those concerns and they still have those concerns even with the amended application. Our job as councillors is to advocate for those residents, which is why I wanted to come here today and to bring across those concerns around overdevelopment, about the size of it and about the impact it's going to have on those residents living on Midshaw Street in the bungalows. So that's pretty much all that I've wanted to say. So that's pretty much all that I've wanted to say. We have put in written representations on this, receptive written representations on it. There are residents who've contacted and put in written representations on this. And I hope that the committee can take those on board when making a view on this application.
Thank you, Nick. I think that basically comes down to two issues. Why so many one bed students? And the height, which dwarfs the bungalows that Nick's been talking about and also dwarfs that building JBT and Son, which we have pictures of in front of us. They're the two questions I'd like you to try to answer for us, please. Over to Colin and Adam again.
Yeah, I don't mind, Colin. I think you're on mute there, looking like you're about to say something. Is there any chance of putting the slides back up? There's a slide that produced the anticipated search query. It's the one that says street scene. So just the one previous to this. So you'll see on the right a series of diagrams that just explains our thinking, really, how we've arrived at the massing. Admittedly, we're not showing the bungalows on that. During the planning process, the kind of, the queries around massing with the immediate buildings literally on the street that we're on. I will get to the bungalows in a sec. But you'll notice that there's almost like a front and a back in terms of the scale. So the fronts, what I've called the fronts, which is Pick-up Street, that's the front which has the scale, if you like, the seven stories on one side and the five on the other. And you'll see on the diagram there that that's where we focused the height towards that Pick-up Street side. And then it steps down to three stories from the six to the rear, which is precisely the height of the neighboring buildings. You'll see like the kind of the shed to the left and then the five storey buildings to the left of that diagram there. That steps down to a three as well. And in the large black brick student block on the right of that diagram, you'll notice that steps down to a three as well. So we've literally kept to that grain that's in the immediate context. And it's that that mitigates overlooking and overshadowing of the bungalows. That of a scale where, yeah, you know, it wouldn't feel oppressive, if you like, if it was like a six storey building overlooking a bungalow garden, that would be ridiculous. So that's how we've addressed both the immediate scale and the bungalows to the rear. The small two storey shed that's kind of adjacent to the site, as Colin's touched on, that's something we've just had to simply work around. If we were to kind of acknowledge that scale, it would be a little alien to the wider context. Opposite the street on Pick-up Street, there's a 10 storey student block. So it's almost as if the two story shed is the thing that's out of date now, if you like. I must admit, it was a real challenge trying to deal with that. And we reduced floor to floor heights from three metres to 2.7. That reduced the overall height of the building. The original proposal was seven stories as well, so we reduced that to six at the front. As I say, it steps down to three. So we've done everything we can to kind of mitigate the sort of cavern, if you like, that's there. And then with regard to the kind of the bias towards the one beds, it basically just comes down to viability, really. The original proposal was 35 studios. They weren't intended to be for students, by the way, for what it's worth. But they were 35 studios. That had a higher overall value than the 26 apartments we've got now. So basically, we were just kind of forced into the one bed bias just to try and retain a certain number of units. I hope that answers the questions.
That's fine. Thanks very much. I agree with your phrase, we've done what we can. I think that's a reasonable thing to say. Thanks Colin, thanks Adam.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Questions to the members? Councillor Lake has one for you.
Thanks, Chair. The JBT and Son have presented us with a set of photographs, which kind of make, to my eye, the JBT building now looks a little incongruous, set against all the blocks around it. But that's not their fault. They were there first. I'm just looking at the quite extensive document that we've been submitted on behalf of JBT. And it does appear to point out quite a number of what appear to be valid objections based on planning parameters. Were you aware of this document? And I suppose the question really is to our planning team. Has the full context of that document been considered in our planning team's assessments?
I think it's fair.
Can I just respond, Chair?
Yes, Colin.
We're aware of objections from JBT and Son. I'm not aware of a particular document as such. Well, you know, in terms of the objections that they have made during the application process, we were made aware of that. And obviously, we've done response to that, including what I touched on before about the agents of change. Quite right in terms of the building, we're looking at congruence. Or incongruency itself doesn't make a particular street scene unattractive. It can actually add quirkiness, it can add interest and so on. There's been evolution over the history of the way the area has changed and not least by the huge scale that's been, you know, evolved in terms of student accommodation development. So and there's no doubt that you could ask the question, well, could you not include that site within your development site? It would make a larger site. The urban design officer asked us that very question. But it's a difficult one when it's in private hands. You start to get into the rounds of discussions where land value itself is not reasonable because it seemed to be, well, you need our site to complete yours. Obviously, the application is what it is. It's before you in terms of our site. And we've had to design around it as architects put it to you. And, you know, in terms of just the one bed units, although there is a bias towards that, as Adam, the architect, mentioned, it's about viability. It actually still reflects an ongoing need within the strategic housing market assessments reports as well. So the terms of the demand in that area is for units of a good size, but they're still on smaller households. So it's trying to balance up the two that are coming forward. There's really no point in a developer designing a scheme which doesn't reflect what that needs going to be. Otherwise, you're going to get a planning permission and you're never going to put a spade in the ground and that that's a costly exercise. So hopefully, we'll give you a good response to the issues you've raised. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Colin. I think we can go on to Fergal now to answer that point about the document, but also to talk about any revisions and updates, et cetera, and so on. I think it's a same thing, really, isn't it?
Chair, thank you very much, Fergal McVoy, team leader for the city centre team. Chair, I'll go through housekeeping rules first before I move on to quick praise by Councillor Lake and also by councillor Small. Regrettably, we only yesterday consulted Edward Lander, planning consultants acting on behalf of the objectors JBT and Son, who are the joining locksmiths. They felt that they weren't given adequate time in which to make representations to the meeting today. So we've, over the past 24 hours, we've been in correspondence with the planning agents acting on behalf of JBT. They've requested that the committee be informed and the minutes record that JBT and Sons Limited asked for the agenda item to be deferred for future consideration on the grounds that the objector was provided with insufficient notice to attend the committee meetings. And as you'll be aware, we're considering the item today. So as a consequence of that, that request was rejected. They would like to, for the planning committee to undertake a site visit to see firsthand the impact that the proposed development will have on this established and longstanding business. Chair, as a result of that, and maybe to preempt a request for a site visit, I went down to the site this morning, I took a number of photos. There's six photos that all members of the planning committee and yourselves have been given today, which I think accurately reflects the relationship between the application site, between JBT and Sons, between those residential properties on Marlborough, the back of the bungalows on Marlborough Street. Chair, one of the other issues that, and maybe this is what councillor Lake has touched on, that the objector raised was, they felt they've submitted two letters of objections, one to the originating application and also one to the amended scheme following the reduction in scale and the reduction in the number of units. Both these letters are seven pages long. There's a summary within the agenda documents which identifies the four main areas of concern that were raised on behalf of JBT and Sons Limited. Obviously, with a seven page objection which has been submitted twice, it's very difficult without the report being overtly long that we kind of summarise the main issues and retain the trust of the objection without kind of reiterating point for point those issues that have been raised. I've read through the objections, both letters by Edward Lander. I'm satisfied with in the case officer's report that the main, those main elements that they have raised have been addressed. And as far as practical alterations have been made to the scheme to take on board those comments, there's a number of issues that relate to the kind of availability of plans that they are set for them to look online. Those issues have been addressed also, Chair, so. But out of due process, there's an updated table note that all members of the planning committee received yesterday in which all both objection letters have been there there in full, Chair. Okay, so that's just so those issues are kind of tabled within the note. Going on to the main issues of the application, there's a detailed report in front of you. It'd probably be easier if you members of the planning committee go to the photographs which have been passed to you earlier today. Photo one is, shows the site when viewed from Pick-up Street. It shows the existing five storey student accommodation to the right. The application site border bounded by a palisade fence in the middle of the photo. The object of JBT and Sons to the left and in the backdrop of that, the seven storey existing residential scheme on Marlborough Street and Pick-up Street. Both photos two and three, both of those are taken from Pick-up Street and they just show the application site at various angles. But you will see from the Pick-up Street side, you've got a seven storey existing student accommodation scheme. Then you've got the two storey locksmiths, JBT and Sons, which I think have been in situ since 1928. You've got the vacant location site used as a car park. And then you've got the five storey student accommodation scheme. Photos four and five, it's the back of the site. It's just the site taken from Marlborough Street. You'll see at the front of photo four, shows that kind of two storey building, which has been referred to in the debate. The object is in the backdrop and the existing seven storey student accommodation also in the backdrop. I reckon you will see in that photo, there's effectively two blocks to the development. There's the seven storey student accommodation, which goes down to three stories. It's in a kind of darker grey brick. Marlborough Street, this is effectively what this scheme has done also. It's kind of, it's six stories onto Pick-up Street, marrying the height of the two existing student accommodations. But drops in scale to three stories under Marlborough Street frontage, which effectively replicates what's there at present. And the last photo, photo six at the back, that gives you an indication of the relationship. They're those properties that back onto Marlborough Street that councillor Small referred to in his objection, they're bungalows. They're the bungalows and as you can see, they're kind of enclosed by two metre high brick walls. So hopefully, that will give members of the planning committee a kind of overview of the existing built up nature of the area, the isolated nature of JBT and Sons at the moment and the relationship to the residential properties in the back of Marlborough Street. Hopefully, that will negate the need for members to undertake a site visit at a later date. Chair, you've listened to the agents on behalf of the applicants go through all the issues related to the scheme. And I think the comment came out was, we've done our best. And this is a very difficult process because you've got a unique site. You've got a site, an existing two storey warehouse that is sat there for effect the best part of 100 years. But in the past 15 years or so, the fabric of the surrounding area has been totally changed from kind of formal low scale warehouses to high rise student blocks. The Pick-up Street is between seven stories and five stories in height, but immediately to the back. And I think if you can just look at photo five, you can see kind of the existing student accommodation on Marybone. That's that kind of red brick circular building with the one windows on each elevation. That's opposite something like nine stories in height. So it's an area that's kind of, has changed radically in the past number of years. So much so, that's reflected previously within the development plan. It was a mixed use area. Within the local plan moving forward, it is now identified as a kind of primary residential area, which reflects that of the historic industrial uses that's still remaining in situ in the area. Councillor Small raised the initial concerns that this wouldn't become a student accommodation, a purpose built student accommodation scheme by default. The description of the development relates to private residential apartments within Class C three. Purpose built student accommodations fall within a sui generis class. So any proposal to change the use of the building would require planning permission. I would stress to members that there is nothing to stop a student or a number of students renting apartments within the building. There's nothing we can do about that, but it would not become purpose built student block. And I think that reflects the main concerns of the surrounding residents and local councillors. Equally so, to protect amenity of those residents which back onto the application Marlborough Street, the scheme has been designed in such a way that it's three stories at the rear, which aligns with the existing student accommodation block that also faces onto the back of those properties. those properties. We're satisfied that this is adequate separation distance and, and you can see by the last image on the handout you've been given today, that the, the outlook from the back of those bungalows, it, it's not a great system. And if they were being in front of us today, I think we'd be looking for a far better design solution. I suppose the main issue is the relationship between the historic use JBET and Sons and what is proposed in front of you today. Every effort has been made by the case officer to ensure that the viability of, of that business moving forward is protected and, and they can remain in, in situ. You, you will notice photo three shows the application site to the right of, of the building. There is only one window on the back on first floor level on the back of JBET and Sons, which would join the boundary with the application site. The application site is blank gabled on the side with JBET. All tho- those windows for JBET and Sons are either at the front or rear of the building or on the side adjoining the existing seven-story student block. The one change to the recommendation is in relation to condition five. We've asked during the course of the application, we asked for an updated acoustic survey to be undertaken to basically ensure that the agent of principle was adhered to and any new use in the area wouldn't affect the kind of operational requirements of the existing operations. So condition five, which relates to kind of scheme for acoustic mitigation, just needs to be tweaked slightly to be reinforced with the fact that a survey has been submitted and that just needs to be reflected in the condition. Chair said, there's a detailed report in front of you where all the issues have been the number of units have been severely reduced. The overall scale has slightly been reduced, albeit it's still six stories. It's just marginally higher than the building that's there currently to the right-hand side. And every effort has, has been made to ensure that the objectors can operate without any hindrance from the adjoining building. Thank you. I know councillor Hanson kind of wants me to shut up, so I'll, I'll shut up now unless there's any further questions that members have got.
Anna wants to.
They well be.
Thank you. It's not a question, it's just a request for clarification. So you said that JBET and Sons um, are saying that they've not received sufficient notification of the meeting. Can you confirm that they received notification in, in the usual timeframes?
Um, no, normally we'd like, once the agenda's published, the agenda was published, um, Mon- Monday of last week, we'd like to give them, as we give the applicants, uh, adequate notice. It just so happens and through note that the case officer dealing with this application is currently off sick, it's only when I kind of thought about it over the weekend and I just checked to see if the objector had been notified. They hadn't. So first thing on Monday morning yesterday, I notified the objector, told them it was our planning committee today. They said they had other arrangements, they couldn't attend this meeting. Hence, both those detailed letters of objection from the objectors are attached to the table note and why I took those six photos this morning to give members a kind of understanding of the relationship in and around the site.
Thanks, Fergal. Yeah, I mean, I think these are brilliant. They do equate in this, in a sense to what would have been a site visit. So that takes out that situation. It's unfortunately they weren't informed, but they have put all the information through to us and we have had Nick Small to put the objections in as well. So the objections have been covered. There's nothing else from members? No?
Chair, can I just make a point? Sorry, Chair. Sorry, Chair, just make a point. It's not the Campbell head of planning. I, I just need to correct the report as Felicity did in terms of the, uh, legal fees that are expected to be paid for this application. There are a number of, um, reports before you that stipulate the one thousand five hundred, but as Felicity explained, that's been changed since the reports were written. So just to cover all the reports that refer to one thousand five hundred pounds, that is being removed and the fee will be agreed at a later stage. Thank you.
Amanda, councillor Maloney.
Thanks, Chair. Um, it's, it's more, more of a question really and I, I must say I found the photographs very, very helpful and it's the photographs that have prompted my question, specifically photograph six, um, which is the, um, Marlborough Street view towards the bungalows on the opposite side of the road. Now, I, I know it stated that the, um, the walls, the, the bungalow walls are two metre, or boundary walls are two metres high. Uh, but it's not clear from that photograph and I'm not brilliant at reading the, uh, the, um, plan, uh, that's at the end of the application. So I was just wondering what, are the, are there any, is there any possibility of overlooking the bungalows from the three-story high, um, proposed developments at the other side of the road?
Councillor, councillor Maloney, um, there's, in my opinion, there's adequate separation distance between the two buildings, as you can see. And lights have climbed on top of the wall and got photos, but obviously I, I couldn't and that wouldn't be ethical in terms of the window, what is behind that wall. I think the only likelihood of there being any potential overlooking would be from perhaps the, the second floor of on Marlborough Street, but I, I couldn't give you categorically insurance because I, I don't know what, what sits behind those walls other than that those back gardens are very tight, they've got a large defensible space. So the likelihood of there being overlooking is highly unlikely, but I, I couldn't give you a hundred percent categorically insurance.
Thanks for that.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that will do for our questions. I think we've really covered it in detail again. And as such, I'm moving on to the last point, Mike. Uh, can I move the recommendation as amended, uh, be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. And as, as we say, that concludes the debate on this somewhat detailed application. Uh, same conduct of voting as last time, so please, your, your vote please, Chair.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Four.
Councillor Merritt?
Four.
Councillor Maloney?
Four.
Councillor Lake?
Four.
Councillor Key?
Four.
You councillors, that concludes the vote on the application. I can confirm the voting is of those six members eligible to vote on this application. All are voted in favour and therefore the recommendation as amended is approved. With that in mind, we will now move on to our next item of business, number six on today's agenda, which relates to the site of number two hundred and eighty Alton Road, Liverpool eighteen, and which is located in Churchward. Chair, if I can divert to you.
Thank you. I think we've, we've got Colin Aspinall as the agent to speak on this one. If you can join us, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, just hold on. Uh, yeah, the development is near completion now, uh, but we just have put an application in for a, a few amendments. Uh, the first amendment is to reduce the sandstone wall at the front on Alton Road. Uh, this just gives greater visibility, uh, for the residents or the, what will be the residents on the ground-floor apartments facing Alton Road. Uh, the second one is, we did have two entrances which were going to be on Alton Road, but we've come to realise, uh, where the, where the two new entrances would be. The pavement is very narrow, i- it's, in fact, it's less than three feet. So it's actually quite dangerous to walk along, especially in the dark. It's certainly not wheelchair accessible. Cars fly along Alton Road and I certainly wouldn't want to be walking along there in the dark with, which, you know, cars are literally two foot away from you. So that's why we have, uh, we want to do away with the two previously planned entrances and use the current entrance. Although there was an objection saying that that entrance has never been used, I don't know where they got that from. It's, uh, the entrance was used, it was, had a wooden gate on. Uh, we're going to replace that with, uh, a secure uh, iron gate in keeping with the surroundings. And, uh, there would be two gated accesses as well. Uh, and at them accesses, you can contact the people in the apartments and uh, I think that covers that one. Uh, what else was there? Oh yeah, the vehicle access in and out. I've already, that we're going to put gate, there's gates on them. Uh, electronic gates. What else was there? I think that's it. That's all we wanted to change. Uh.
Colin, I think that will do us actually. Um, we've got nobody else listed to speak, so do we have, do we have any questions from our members? No, so I think we go over, stick over to our case officer, which I think is Stuart Park on this one. Would you like to say your bits, please, Stuart?
Thank you, Chair. Stuart Clark, team leader of the City South team. Um, as you've heard from the applicant, this proposal is for a minor variation to a scheme that was approved in two thousand seventeen to erect two block, two blocks of flats comprising ten units in total. The proposed changes are very minor comprising alterations to the proposed boundary treatments relating to a reduction in height to the front boundary wall facing Alton Road and the rationalization of two pedestrian accesses into one existing access. There's also the relocation of the cycle store within the site and the reconfiguration of the parking layout. The reduction in the wall height will improve the aspect from habitable rooms in the new flats and will be similar in scale to the nearby property on, on the colders. It is therefore going to be in keeping with other nearby boundaries. Uh, and this proposal, this part of the proposal is also supported by one of the respondents to the application. The rationalization of the pedestrian entrance from two to one will reintroduce the historical gate onto the corner of the site and will allow for more of the sandstone wall to be retained along Alton Road, which is characteristic of the area. We've had one objection who considers that the loss of the two pedestrian accesses on Alton Road will encourage visitor parking into, on Glendike Road and that would increase the risk to pedestrian safety. The scheme's been considered by the head of highways and transportation, who's raised no objections to the proposal and considers that the revised proposal would be better due to the narrow width of Alton Road, which the applicant referred to, which is not suitable for wheelchair use. So we're happy that the proposed rationalization of the pedestrian accesses are acceptable. The internal reconfiguration of the parking and cycle stores is acceptable, resulting in no loss of on-to-off-street parking. And the head of highways considers that the proposals will no have, have no detrimental impact on highway safety. Uh, the proposal will also not give rise to any detrimental impact to residential amenity or affect entries on the side chair. And therefore, we're happy to recommend approval for these minor changes to the scheme approved in two thousand seventeen, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Stuart? No. Thanks for your contribution, Stuart. Thank you for calling for your contribution as well. I, I think we can move to the vote again, Mike. Uh, can I move the recommendation as amended be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. If you could confirm your vote, please.
Voting for?
Councillor Hanson?
Four.
Councillor Merritt?
Four.
Councillor Maloney?
Four.
And councillor Key? Thank you, committees. That concludes the vote on the application. And of those members present and eligible to vote on this application, the five members present have voted unanimously to approve the application subject to conditions and requirements as amended. We will therefore move on to our next item of business, which is number seven on today's agenda and which relates with the former cooperative food supermarket on Seventeen St Mary's Road, Liverpool nineteen, in speak Garston Ward. Councillor Key, you've indicated your interest previously, so therefore if you could leave the chamber, join consideration of this application. You'll be notified once we've concluded this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've got Fay Healy to speak to us on this one. Thank you, Fay. Fay, can you speak a little closer to the microphone, please?
Just before we move to your next slide, I'm monitoring the live feed and the audio is not, not being picked up. Obviously, as you can tell in the chamber, we can't actually hear you on a microphone system. So you may need to relocate to another seat with an appropriate green tick to use an alternative microphone, just to make sure it's very clear for everyone participating. And if you could test that microphone first as well, please.
Can you hear? Yep. The planning application has been subject to a detailed technical review by your officers and statutory consultees. The conclusion has been drawn that the proposal is acceptable subject to conditions. The proposal has also been subject to a full public consultation undertaken by Liverpool City Council and undertaken by ourselves. During our own public consultation, we issued an information leaflet to five thousand homes and wrote directly to around two hundred neighbouring properties. We have received significant support for the proposals with ninety-seven per cent of people responding to our information leaflet indicating their support. Most of the comments received by us from the public focused on regenerating the Brownfield Derelict site, bringing a much-needed supermarket to Garston Village, acting as an anchor store, providing local choice and competition and offering new local jobs. Uh, next slide, please. To conclude, the development is deemed to be acceptable in technical terms, is policy compliant and has support from all statutory consultees. We intend to redevelop an unattractive Brownfield site, which currently attracts antisocial behaviour and should committee resolve to follow the officer recommendation and grant approval. It is Little's intention to commence development at the earliest opportunity. The multi-million pound investment will generate up to thirty new jobs for local people, all of which will receive the living wage and Little do not operate zero-hour contracts. On this basis, we respectfully encourage members to follow the officer recommendation and grant planning permission today. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay. Um, I hope there's no questions on this. This should be a good news story, I think. No? Okay, Stuart, over to you again.
Thank you, Chair. You've, I've got a detailed report in front of you and you've had some detailed information from the applicant. As you've heard, um, the application site is proposed to be used as a supermarket, which was a previous supermarket that was closed some years ago and is a key site in the heart of the district centre in Garston. of the district centre in Garston. The principle of retail within the district centre is encouraged and welcomed and is fully supported by both the Unitary Development Plan and the Emerging Local Plan Retail Policies. The proposal will bring a key unused site back into use and will add to the vitality and viability of the district centre. The proposal is highly accessible by public transport and by foot and will have a significant off street car park, uh, which will also facilitate with, um, making provision for the remainder of the district centre to encourage link trips and which will add to, uh, the businesses in, in and around the actual application site. Um, the, there was only been one objection to the scheme, uh, and that was on highway safety grounds, but the scheme has been carefully considered by the Head of Highways and Transportation, who's satisfied that both the amount of parking is appropriate for a supermarket in this location and that there will be no detrimental impact on the local highway network, subject to the improvement of pedestrian accessibility around the site. He's also satisfied that the proposal can be adequately serviced. The car park is currently closed to public access and its reopening as part of the proposed scheme will allow for, as I mentioned before, link trips and supporting other commercial uses and the market within the district centre. In terms of design, um, the scheme has been amended since submission and there have been some improvements, um, to the elevation that fronts the car park, which is the main entrance to the site. There were concerns about, um, potential, uh, poor aspect on St Mary's boat, but this act, this elevation is largely screened by existing retail units which are going to be retained. So your officers are satisfied that the design that's been put forward is appropriate in this location. And it's considered there'd be no detrimental impact on nearby residential properties, uh, which are limited to flats which already front onto St Mary's Road, whether there, where there are already high levels of activity. There've been 24 letters of support, 22 were received late Chair, um, in relation to the application, so that there's good public support for it. And the reuse of the long standing vacant site is therefore welcomed. We'll widen the retail offering to what is, has been a declining district centre and will provide economic benefits in the form of new jobs and we're happy to recommend approval, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions for Stuart. Absolutely straightforward, I think. Um, and as such, can I move the recommendation as amended be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair for your valid motion to approve the recommendation. Uh, I'll take your vote first please, if I may.
Four.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Four.
councillor Marrett.
Four.
councillor Maloney.
Four.
And councillor Lake.
Four.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on this application. Of those members present through our proceedings and eligible to vote on the application, the outcome is therefore the five members present, all have voted in favour of the application and it is therefore approved on that basis. We will now move on to our next item of business if you'd just bear with me briefly whilst I summon our member back into the chamber. Thank you colleagues. We'll now continue on with item number eight relating to numbers nine and 10, Oakfield, Liverpool four, Ian Anfield Ward. Chair, if I can refer to you please.
Okay, this one we've got Richard Byrne, who was the agent, uh, doing the introduction for us. Thank you.
Hey, yeah, can you hear me? Hello, I'm Richard Byrne, Senior Planner at Greyside Planning, um, and I'll be presenting to you a proposal to alter and convey a property to form 27 bedroom hotel, erect single story extensions at the front, create car park to the rear. Um, next slide please. So the site is bounded by Oakfield to the rear and Oakfield Road to the front. Um, Oakfield is residential in its nature, um, to the rear and Oakfield Road is much more of a high street with a emphasis on commercial properties. Um, it is within a five minute walk of Anfield Stadium and it is because of this that it is ideally located to maximise, um, this opportunity to support Liverpool as a destination for visitors. Um, next slide please. So the, I'll just run you through the floor plans. Um, the basement would house a staff room, breakfast area and four guestrooms. The ground floor would be a reception area with a small bar within the lobby opposite the reception. Um, there would be five rooms, including one ambulance room and one fully accessible room. Um, and the first floors and second floors would replicate each floor plan with nine guestrooms. Next slide please. There would be substantial improvements to the visual amenity of the building as part of the proposed development. Um, there will be much more of a balanced approach to the window fenestration, which we believe is important given the site's location within the primarily residential area, where there would be no windows to the side elevations so as to protect existing level, levels of amenity for neighbours from a privacy perspective. A final slide please. So I just wanted to finish on this slide really to emphasise the reorientation of the property from Oakfield at the rear, which it currently is to Oakfield Road. Um, which should also, you know, improve the, the wider regeneration of Oakfield Road as a high street. Um, so the primary entrance, as I say, would be reorientated to Oakfield Road, um, to provide a much improved street scene and introduce an active frontage to revitalise the area. Um, so just to summarise the proposals, um, I think you've got a report in front here and hopefully my presentation as well gives you an indication of what we're trying to do here. Um, so I'd like to invite any questions and hopefully you, um, follow the recommendation and approve.
Anna, you have a question?
Thank you Chair. Uh, so my question is about recycling. So one of the comments from the recycling team was that as private hotel, you won't qualify for free council collection and you need a commercial waste strategy. Do you have this strategy and how much of your waste, what, what percentage of your waste will be recycled and how? Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you for your question. Um, there will be a storage, waste storage facility to the front, um, of the property within its boundaries. You wouldn't see it from the street. Um, it would be a commercial pick up of waste, um, as it doesn't qualify for Liverpool City Council. Um, I don't actually have the exact details of that, but within the, um, the management plan document, which was submitted, um, it will be once a week. Um, and I'm, uh, I'm pretty sure that it would, well, it would include the separation of general waste and recycling waste, but in terms of exact details, I don't have those. Um, but I'd be happy to, to forward them on, but what I would say is that obviously, um, as part of the discharge conditions, um, that would have to be agreed with the council prior to any operation.
Do you have any other questions from members? No. Um...
Hi Chair. Yeah. Um, I'd like a question over the, um, it says about a residential bar area. Will that bar be open to public use as well or is it just for residents of the hotel? Thank you.
Um, yeah, there is an inclusion of a small bar area in the lobby. Um, it is located opposite the reception and that is very much designed so as to be a bar for guests. Um, and obviously then the, the applicants would have to, you know, apply for a licence with the council, which would also include additional controls should that be required. But, um, just to answer your question directly, um, it is proposed as a bar for guests and that's why it's been located in the lobby opposite the reception.
Thank you Lilla. Are there any other questions? Uh, now we were going to have Lena talking on, oh, yes, Billy, you can talk instead.
Right, we, we've objected to this as Anfield councillors due to, yes, it's another hotel along with all the Airbnbs and HMOs and everything else. We've got an Anfield. Um, since this hotel, um, started actually, um, getting developed and everything, um, we've had issues right along the line. Obviously this applicant, um, went with a private building inspector and didn't use the city councils, um, which made us, it very hard for us to, um, get in touch with them people and make our complaints and everything. Um, contrary to the report and everything down there, there has been two cases where police and environmental health have been involved. Because in August 2020, when the development first started, uh, there was an issue there with very loud music and voices and everything on site, um, which environmental health and the police turned up and I believe, I can't prove, or have, I've got the evidence, but one person was taken off site by the police. In December 2020, um, the scaffolding started coming down on the site and local residents got straight on to myself and other local councillors and everything and complained of falling debris, including bricks and everything from the remaining standing structure. The only way we could report this was through the Health and Safety Executive, because obviously they'd gone through their own planning inspector. Despite the report where it says there's been consultation and everything with residents and local councillors, there's been no consultation with residents or local councillors. No one has asked us to attend the meeting, no one has asked residents to have a little meeting and let you know what it's all about. All we've had is the planning application letter, although it does say that 94 letters went out, they're just standard letters that went out. Obviously Oakfield is a residential area, we have a school down at the bottom, we already have parking issues there and I'm in the process along with, um, highways and parking services to try and get Oakfield Road either made, um, well, closed for certain areas or made just the one way, um, to help the school traffic calming issues because there's been lots of issues there along with Anfield Road School. And we just don't think it's the appropriate thing or the appropriate application to go on a site like Oakfield Road and everything. Um, obviously 27 people will lead to 54 people, there's going to be noise, there's going to be waste, um, these things happen, antisocial behaviour and everything. And what we as local councillors would ask maybe the officer to see if he could talk to the applicants and see is, we had an applicant in here a while ago, I'm not going to mention any names or anything, but they got guests to put down like a, a fee, a levy when people stayed there. And if they were found to be antisocial behaviour or cause disruption, they lost that money. So if this was going to be constructed in the built up area, which it is, um, in Oakfield, Oakfield Road, as the, uh, chap has said, is businesses and all that like all around, but Oakfield is a very leapy area, very nice, very quiet. A lot of people who have lived there have lived there many, many years and they don't want to wake up to a 27 bedroomed hotel next to them, which is sure to stay. So I would ask if the officer could maybe, um, have a word with the applicants and see if that could be a possibility. Thank you.
Thanks Billy. Um, any other members want to make a comment? At the moment I'm thinking in terms of, you need to do some more work here, don't you? Uh, that's fairly obvious, you know? Do we defer it? Do you, as members, do you think we should put a condition on it for making it a temporary thing or what do people think please?
Chair, if, if I could make a suggestion that the case officer has provided a detailed report and it'd be appropriate for the case officer to set out the issues in that report in detail and to address the concerns raised by the local Ward Council, just to provide some clarity before the committee makes any form of decision, whether it be to defer or to consider a recommendation to progress the application.
Thank you Chairman. Uh, my name is John Hayes. I am the Team Leader for Development Management in the north of Liverpool. Um, Chair, you've got a full report in front of you, uh, and you've had that brief presentation there by the applicant. Um, you'll see from the report Chair that this proposal is, um, to use the existing buildings, uh, that currently front onto Oakfield, um, as a hotel, um, they're large three story, uh, villas, um, and you, you'll see the total number of bedrooms will be 27. Um, in terms of the, um, objections, um, that we've received as part of the statutory consultation, again, they're listed in the report and they've been reflected by councillor Marrett's, um, comments, uh, earlier. So I'll just go through, um, very quickly, uh, the report, um, and then I will mention one or two things and try and pick up the various points that have been raised, uh, both by councillor Bennett and by councillor Marrett. So in terms of the principle of development, um, clearly hotels are compatible, uh, with residential areas. Um, there are numerous examples throughout the city, but clearly much depends on the way that they're managed and, um, um, the, the, the impact or the potential impact that they have on residential amenity. So the second part of the report goes through the issues around residential amenity, including that for the occupiers of the existing property. Uh, you'll see from that that we, um, have not had any objections, uh, from our environmental health colleagues, um, but nonetheless they raised some concerns about the potential for activity, uh, in the external areas, particularly through smoking. Um, and I'll come on to that in just a moment. In terms of design, um, again, you'll see that the, from, from the visuals that were presented, um, that there are going to be some alterations made and your officers are generally happy with those. In terms of highways, um, again, that's fairly well addressed in the report. There is an element of car parking associated with the, uh, facility, uh, provided, um, at the, what will now become the rear. Um, and so for all of those reasons Chair, we, we've recommended approval. Just in terms of the residential amenity point, um, clearly this is a concern that, that has been dealt with, uh, on a number of applications, uh, for similar uses by this committee. Um, and they stem to some degree from that question that councillor Bennett's raised about whether or not these facilities, particularly the bar element, can be used by external people. Uh, the short answer is yes, they can. Um, there, there is no way through the planning process of, of controlling that unfortunately. Um, what your officers can control through the planning process is, uh, the, the potential impact of the hotel and associated uses, uh, with a hotel, um, particularly in the external areas. And I say that because clearly this is in an area where, um, the target market is very likely to be, um, football, um, activity. And we know from experience that some of these, uh, hotels, particularly on Anfield Road, um, tend to have, um, sort of function type events associated with them and that can cause quite a lot of, um, disruption, uh, to nearby residential properties. If we just go back, perhaps we can go back Mike to the, um, slide which showed the layout of the development. Um, so you'll see, um, from, from the report Chair, that we, we'd actually recommended a condition, uh, the last condition in, at number 17 about hotel guests and members of staff, um, not being able to, um, use the external areas for smoking. I would suggest that needs to be significantly more substantial than just around smoking. It needs to be that the external areas, um, generally shall not be used outside the hours of seven in the morning till seven at night. Um, and that would obviously prevent the potential for external noise and activity disturbing, uh, those nearby residents, particularly those on Oakfield. Um, but in addition to that Chair, because of, we, we, we know that the way the type, the, these types of premises operate, I was also going to suggest an additional condition, um, that's, um, prevents any, um, uh, um, use of acoustic amplified music rather, uh, or video, uh, or, or television, uh, into the external areas. So that would prevent, um, the use of these sort of external areas being used, um, to watch the football match, um, you know, during the daytime. So you would have two conditions there. One is to go... One is to control and limit the use other than property for access and servicing, other than between seven and seven, so you can't use them after seven o'clock at night until the following seven o'clock in the morning. And then another condition that then avoid, prevents the use of any external areas being used to watch the football match or to have any external amplified music directed to those areas. I think the possibility of that happening is very different in this particular site compared to some of those that currently exist on Anfield Road. And you can see from the plan there, the large area that is already going to be given over to parking. So the actual area available for external use by residents is already fairly limited in your officer's view. But nonetheless, I think those conditions are prudent and would hopefully overcome some of the concerns that have been raised by the ward councillors and picking up on that question by councillor Bennetts. Just finally, Chair, picking up on some of the other points that councillor Merritt raised about the activity that's already taken place on the site and about the consultation. Clearly, the consultation that councillor Merritt's referring to is consultation directly with the applicant. That unfortunately is not something that we as officers are able to insist upon. Clearly, it's open to the applicants and their agents to engage in that wider stakeholder engagement. And then in relation to the construction activity that's taken place on the site already, again, that's addressed in the final part of the report, paragraphs 5.1 and 5.2. I can't comment on the point that councillor Merritt raised about police activity, I'm not aware of that. What I can say is we have been made aware that this activity was being undertaken. But my understanding is that all of that active, all of the work that was going on clearly was at their own risk, but also was effectively refurbishment work. So I'm not aware that they've done anything of itself required planning permission. So obviously, those again are matters ultimately for the applicant to answer. But I'm not sure that they that they go to the heart of the wider issues around this particular application. Hopefully, I have answered those particular concerns. Sorry, there is one final point and that was the additional condition that had been put on a similar application. And I know the application and I think the applicant's agent will also know it because I think they were involved with that particular scheme. That was an offer that was made by those applicants in those particular circumstances. That's not before you. And I think I made the point at the time of that particular application that it was very unusual and that we couldn't actually condition that requirement. It was more of a promise, if you like, by the applicant to have that facility. But it wasn't a specific planning condition. And I would be wary of attaching something along those lines with this particular proposal, given that there are strict rules around the appropriateness and reasonableness of conditions. Happy to answer any further questions, Chair.
Thanks, thanks, John. Joe?
Thanks, John. This is John Hayes with his many deputies, yeah. In terms of, I mean, you've covered the external drinking and I think that's important and that's about enforcement. You touched on clients only and you're absolutely right in terms of that is a licensing issue. But I still think as a planning authority, we should be making reference to to support the licensing committee. And now I'll just add one on the old Westminster pub, which I've said here they will come, they will come and ask for the licence after they said they wouldn't and they did and they, yeah, and they've got it, yeah. Two hour, three hour discussion with licensing to try and restrict what they can and what they can't do. So I think perhaps as a planning authority, we should be making reference to our views, should be, I know we can legally enforce it, but certainly as a licensing condition, we should be saying, you know, sorry, as a planning condition, we would not support. Or where's that effect? You know what I'm trying to say, yeah, so if you do that. And I think it's based on, the reality is this is a football hotel, which will have 27 various kinds of people, yeah, who will, no doubt, after the match either go into the sand, head back, early hours of the morning, whatever. And that is the, seems to be around the Anfield area and growing round north of Liverpool now. Now, with the party class, call them what you will, you know, come back, create absolute mayor at four, five, six o'clock in the morning. And, you know, something that perhaps as a planning authority again, we should be alerting the licensing authority to some of the issues and conditions that we're, as a planning authority, we are getting those issues, particularly around Anfield. I've got, you know, I've got issues around Kirkdale as well. So perhaps it's something that, you know, we need to make a note to have that communication with licensing. So when the licensee is saying, and it's happened to me a fortnight ago, no issues, there's loads of hotels in Anfield, not a problem, not an issue, not a, and I know, and I'm telling the licensing committee that's, he's telling lies. The licensing committee have got no information or evidence to support that, so perhaps that's what we need to do. I'm really disappointed as well that the, we get objections from residents about applications, they've already started to work on the application. I know we're limited in what we can do and what we can't do. But, you know, the starting work at, you know, half-six in the morning, run on to nine fifteen. Once we get those complaints in through the process, what are we doing as enforcements? What are we doing as building control? Are we sending our people out there? Are we putting, what are we doing to give some reassurance to residents? And I don't know whether it's a normal, you know, and it's happening more and more and more where people are saying, well, we push for planning permission or we don't do planning permission until we, until we're made to do planning permission. So again, there's that link up between yourselves as you're getting those concerns in and what are we, what action are we taking prior to this planning? Because these developers are just taking the Michael, just taking the absolute Michael, so I'll just stop on that, Chair.
Yeah, through you, Chair, thank you. I'll pick up on councillor Hanson's last point first around enforcement. We've tried to address it within the report. And we've acknowledged the concerns. And I think councillor Merritt made the point in the written submissions that it doesn't sort of necessarily bode well for the way the premises might be managed in the future if right at the beginning of the process, there's already concerns about the way that the construction activity is being undertaken. But specifically in relation to councillor Hanson's point, we can only take action where there is a breach of planning control. So that would mean that there has to be some kind of development taking place that falls within the scope of the planning acts. So there has to be physical extensions, et cetera. My understanding in relation to this is a lot of the development was stripping out works. It's that kind of work, so it's re-tilings, taking out old windows, all of that kind of stuff. None of that in and of itself requires planning permission. Now, that doesn't mean that we just sort of draw back from it. We've obviously made the concerns that residents have known to the applicants, but we can only act if there is a proper breach. In addition to that, we have to be, when we take action or we decide it's appropriate to take action, that action has to be expedient, reasonable and proportionate. So they are the terms used in that planning policy framework. And I think that the judgment in a case like this would be that it probably isn't expedient to take enforcement action when we have a planning application before the officers and which will be considered by committee. So we have to take all of those things into account. As it's clear from the report, we did, we did follow this up, we have been on-site. In terms of building control matters, again, probably building control can't get involved because it's through approved inspectors rather than being done through the city council's own building control service. So there's limited power there. And again, in terms of the way the activity is being undertaken, as councillor Merritt now knows, that's a matter ultimately for the Health and Safety Executive. So the way that they're operating in terms of their own personal safety, again, is, falls outside of the, both the planning and the building control processes. So yes, it is unfortunate, but it's not something that we can directly get involved in the particular circumstances of this site, unfortunately. The second point was around the issue of licensing and whether we engage with licensing. Yes, we do before me, but an awful lot of these applications, I will make a point of consulting with the licensing. These particular applications do raise wider issues that I've tried to address in my summing up. But ultimately, the, there are two different areas of legislation here. One is about licensing and they deal with different matters. They have different legislative requirements as to the issues that they can look at compared to those that we can look at through planning. There is a crossover and as I say, we do consult, but ultimately you have to separate them out in terms of dealing with these particular applications. That's why I've tried to deal, tried to pick up on those concerns that we can pick up around outdoor noise and so on, but I can't pick up on, say, the control of guests versus non-guests. That ultimately is not within the control of planning, unfortunately.
Thank you, John. Are there any other questions, members? Can I ask Richard, can you, sorry, visibly?
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like for John to just clarify something. But I would like to also make a point to support councillor Hanson because on this point of construction works beginning before planning permission is granted, I hear everything you've said there, John, but I think we've got to appreciate that when that happens, it undermines public confidence and it gives the appearance of inevitability to a project. And that is quite worrying. I'd also like to say that, again, supporting councillor Merritt, Oakfield is a quiet backwater in a very noisy area. Many elderly people live in Oakfield. There's a church there, there's a school there. And on the point of external activity and external noise, can you just clarify, you said that you were going to make provision to restrict that between six fifteen and seven fifteen at night?
Seven and seven was my suggestion, Chair.
Yeah, seven and seven. But there's a glaring omission there because many of the noisiest nights around Anfield, okay, when there are midweek games and night games, Anfield is famous for that. So what provision, can we have a provision to extend that? When there is games during the evening that can go on till ten o'clock and after ten o'clock?
Through you again, Chair. So obviously, it's not unreasonable for hotel guests to use the external space associated with a hotel. That's perfectly normal. What I, what I'm trying to achieve through the two suggested conditions are a balance between the use of that external area for normal activity that you might associate with a hotel, whilst avoiding those types of activities you associate with hotels in and around the stadium, which is often about having televisions and so on or functions after a match. And that's why I've suggested in relation to the second condition, which would be to prevent any use of the external area from having audio or visual, whether that's directly from the outside or directly from internal. So that would avoid the possibility, even during the seven and seven period, of having that external area used for those types of activities. Hopefully, that makes sense. So you've got a general restriction, so it cannot be used even for going outside and smoking after seven o'clock at night. No external drinking after seven o'clock at night, no external eating after seven o'clock at night. Carrying on right away, so other than for access and servicing, you could not use those external areas after seven o'clock at night until seven o'clock the following morning. And then at any time of the day, there would be no facility to have any kind of amplified music or visual, audiovisual equipment, either within directly or externally directed from within the building. And that would hopefully prevent the areas being used to watch the football in that sort of open space. Hopefully, that picked up the concerns.
Thank you, John. Are there any other questions? Can I just ask Richard to make some comments what he's heard, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think I just wanted to, is this written? Yeah. I just wanted to respond to the councillors, Merritt, who's representing the objectors, just to say, although it is correct, you know, we didn't reach out prior to the application. I did make it explicitly clear in the process that I was available to talk directly to either yourself or all councillors. Whether that message got back or not, I don't know. But I think just to look at the flip side as well, it has been brought up about the building works, which didn't require planning permission. But we're starting, we're of concern to residents. One area where the communication worked well was, I think I got an email by the case officer and on the same day, I was able, because I got that, to, you know, contact the developer to ask them to stop the works. And he assured me that they were and I think we didn't receive any further complaints beyond that. So I think it did happen. So I just wanted to clear that up to say, I don't know whether the message got back, but we were available. And then just to focus on the case officer's comments about the additional controls, I think we wouldn't really have any objection to them, given that there would be additional controls to protect the residential amenity. And it would allow for the introduction of the hotel use to to be able to happen without that negative impact. And just one final point on the bar, I think, yeah, it is for licensing as a fairer control, but also we have located it as a small bar opposite the reception within the lobby so as to provide like a practicality aspect where it can't actually be used on a large, you know, sort of scale because the space dictates. And I'd just like to close on that, but if there's any more questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any other question for Richard? Okay, no. I mean, I think potentially this could be successful, but I've just heard enough from people so far. To me, I mean, I'm being asked to move a recommendation, you get complete, open it if you like. And I'm just tempted to say, can we put, say, a one-year trial on it? Can we not do that?
Again, Chair, there's strict rules around the use of conditions. And some of them are around, you know, their enforceability and so on, but one of them is whether or not it's reasonable. And I think, given the amount of investment that needs to take place, this isn't about using an existing facility for a different type of operation. This is about making a significant investment into some existing buildings, refurbishing it. You can't really expect the operators to make that kind of investment in a hotel for it to only have the possibility of a one-year permission. And so I think, I think if members are concerned about those wider issues about the licensing and the residential amenity, particularly from external use, then it's probably more appropriate to defer. And obviously, then I can pick those kind of issues up directly with licensing and with the applicant.
Again, I'm asking members for their views. Any comments on this?
Chair, I'd be minded to defer.
I think there's a lot of work still needs doing on this. I think you need to talk to your ward councillors and the officers and so on. So in that case, then I'm going to go against this and I'm going to also move that we defer this item to the next meeting. Is that allowed?
Chair, you as indeed any member of the committee, you're entirely at liberty to move a resolution contrary to the case officer's report. In this instance, you've sought to move defer pending further consultation with the applicants to address any of the concerns raised by members. to address any of the concerns raised by members and indeed members of the public during the course of the consultation and review of the application process. That's an entirely valid resolution for you to move, and you have indeed moved it. With it in mind, therefore, do you wish to clash your vote, please, in favour of deferral?
Voting in favour of deferral.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett, your vote, please.
I'm voting for deferral.
Councillor Hanson, your vote, please.
Ense.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
Four.
Councillor Lake?
In favour of deferral.
Councillor Key?
Four.
Thank you. That concludes the vote on the application. And the effect of the vote is that the application is deferred, five in favour of deferral, one voting against. What this therefore means is the further report will now come back to committee in due course once the case officer's liaised with the applicant and their agent to discuss matters raised during the course of debate at today's meeting. With it in mind, we'll therefore move on to our next item of business, which is number nine on today's agenda and which relates to number 90 County Road, Liverpool IV, which is located in County Ward. And for the benefit of the chair and those present, we have a Mr Mike Carr present, who may answer any questions you may have as a member of the committee. And I will shortly display a number of images on the screen to assist.
Mike, was it, you can do this presentation for us, please?
Yes, thank you. The slides are up. Yeah, thank you. Just a short series of slides. The first slide does set the frontage of the County Road context. Danny's Barber Shop is interesting to note, is also owned by the applicant who's here today with us. The rear shows the elevations and also the on-street bin storages that's recently been brought in by the council. The second slide, please. Those show the plans that were prepared for the application. I think it's the ground floor planners propose is quite an important plan that identifies the curtilage of the premises and that it has its own bin storage area. There's also a note on that slide in relation to the flow extraction system. If you, slide one shows the premises next door with the galvanised flow extraction system. There are methods in place these days where you can clad flow extraction systems with a GRP heat resistant material. You can get basically any brick or any design to screen that if there is a perception of a visual impact. Slide three, please. Slide three sets out the general objections from residents, members and some business competitors. Those are all also identified in the detailed officer reports. So the reason I've put that in the slide is that when we get to the next slide, which is slide four, that sets out some greater detail to look at how those objections can be overcome. Basically, currently many of the businesses along County Road local centre are unregulated in terms of suitable and modern planning controls, which can perhaps explain some of the reasons that objections have been raised to the application. It seems clear that some of the problems residents identified relate to some existing and perhaps poorly managed businesses. We would like to highlight the applicant is also the price of the adjacent Danny's Barber Shop, which is well established and a well-run local business. If planning permission is forthcoming, intends to use and manage 90 County Road in the same positive and respectful way and is confident that the new use of 90 County Road will contribute to the local centre without causing harm. That said, and since the application was submitted for the council's consideration in August 2020, the applicant and his agent have worked positively with the council's officers to get to a point whereby a recommendation to grant planning permission could be reached. Over that time, your officers considered and assessed all the elements attached to the proposals of County Road and now consider that proposed development is a sustainable form of development and the premises would contribute positively to the vitality and viability of the County Road local centre without any demonstrable or unnecessary harm to residential amenity, the street scene or the local environment. We consider that a significant part of the decision to reach such a positive recommendation has been the recognition of how the proposed use of the site is acceptable in principle and could suitably and adequately be controlled through the formulation of a series of planning conditions. Taking that into account, a series of suitable conditions are identified in the officer report and we recognise that those conditions will positively control the use of the site in line with the provisions set out in paragraph 56 of the National Planning Policy Framework. We cannot see any, taking those into account, we cannot see any material reasons as to why the application could not be approved. We would ask that members of the committee grant the planning application subject to the conditions. Examples of various suitable planning conditions for conditions that are set out on the next slide. And in reality, those are replicated in the detailed officer report that takes account of all the material planning considerations, residents' concerns and how those can be suitably dealt with as part of the planning process. Thank you.
Any questions for Mike, please? Do you again, John?
Thank you, Chair, in which case I'll try and keep it very brief. This is an application, as you've heard, for the use of the property as a hot food takeaway. It's within a district centre. One of the reasons it's come to you, in addition to the number of objections, is that we are now, that there's some slight changes to policy through the new local plan. And one of those is about having a 10% threshold on the number of hot food takeaways. You'll see from the report that depending on the way you analyse the data and the amounts of units against the amount of hot food takeaways, the figure varies somewhere between 9.5% and 10.5%. It's always a moving feast, it's always been challenging as well through Covid, to establish exactly the number of units that are currently still operating, et cetera. There's always issues around whether a use is a hybrid use between A3 and A5. Lots of different issues that your officers have discussed directly with the applicants. We've taken the view, as set out in the report, that even if there was this very minor breach, exceedance rather, of the 10% threshold, that it would not be, it would not of itself undermine the policy. So for that basis, we consider it acceptable in principle. The other issues, Chair, are addressed fully in the report. They concern the usual issues around amenity. There is one additional condition that I would recommend, and that is a condition requiring the management of the fume extraction system. It's a standard condition that we usually put on, but we've unfortunately omitted it. So it's just to ensure that the fume extraction is managed and maintained efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Joe?
Thank you, Chair. John, just how do you get past the cumulative impact policy in relation to County Road? For members who don't know, the County Road has a cumulative impact policy to stop proliferation of takeaways, hot and cold food, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So how do we get past that? That's my first question. What discussions did the planning officers have with the group that is set up to regenerate and revitalise County Road, which is a formal council group run under regeneration with a million pound spend to regenerate County Road, which I sit on? So I'm interested in the conversations you've had with us about this kind of an application. And I'll just stop there, but I'm sure I will come back to that.
In relation to the cumulative impact policy, again, it's not dissimilar to the discussion we were having on the previous item around licensing. It's a completely separate policy that is under the licensing authority's remit. So even if you were minded to grant planning permission today, they would still be subject to that licensing requirement, which we dealt with separately, having regard to that cumulative impact policy. So again, we have to consider the planning application against the planning policies. Those planning policies are more closely aligning with those wider licensing objectives, and that's the reference to the 10% threshold. But for the reasons that I've tried to set out earlier and as are more thoroughly explained in the report, we consider that the potential exceedance by a fraction of a percent is reasonable and appropriate. In relation to the second point, have we consulted the group? No, we haven't. No. There are standard protocols for wider consultation. That is, the statutory requirement is effectively either a site notice or notifying adjacent occupiers. We go way beyond that. We've consulted with ward councillors and quite a number of businesses in the vicinity, as well as any residential properties that may exist above the shops and so on. We haven't consulted with that particular group. Clearly, it's open for them to make comments, were they aware of it? But I'm not, my own view is that this would not undermine the ambitions of that particular group anyway. This is an operation of use that is appropriate to a district centre. Happy to answer any further questions, Chair.
Chair, could I just say one point, please, as the agent? And I completely understand the members' input. We submitted the plan application in August last year, so it's been nearly 12 months down the line. And I don't know what the consultation process was then and the status of the working group and so on. But that's when we submitted it and that's when people were consulted. So we've moved from about 10 months down the line. I appreciate all the planning matters that are going on, but that's when we submitted it on the basis then. So I hope everybody is fully aware of what went on. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Just so I am clear, John. You did not consult with a major stakeholder in the County Road area that has responsibility to deliver a one billion pound regeneration project. Okay. Chair, I will be moving that this, with your permission, that this be deferred to allow proper consultation to take part with all stakeholders in the area based on clearly what is an extremely grave admission of consultation within that particular area, Chair.
Pat, thanks. Pat, over to you.
Thanks, Chair. A number of questions. Has there been a traffic impact assessment done on this? I mean, that's pertinent to the objections that were raised by the local residents. Although they didn't ask that specific question, I'm just trying to be helpful in terms of getting an appropriate answer for the residents.
Through you, Chair? No. A traffic impact assessment is a very specific thing. Clearly, the application has been analysed and looked at carefully by your offices in highways, but a transport impact assessment tends to be used for those much larger projects where there are significant highway movements and highway, potential highway impacts. This did not fall within that category.
Thanks, Chair. The second one is about the opening hours. And I know this is condition number three. I'm just wondering whether or not those hours are excessive, 7:00 in the morning till 11:30 at night. It looks like every day of the year, which does seem rather excessive. If I can go on to my next question, which I think is somewhat related, which is about the waste storage. And I take the point that these, the conditions here, but I'm just wondering whether or not there's anything appropriate in the, especially in terms of a food premises to ensure that there are no smells? Because I know that can be a big problem with some of this type of establishment. And I think my last question, if I can find it, is about the architectural liaison officer from Merseyside Police. Has made a number of recommendations there. Are these going to be implemented? And my final, honestly, question is about the extraction flu. And the agent very helpfully said that it would be possible to put GRP cladding on the flue if that would be advantageous. I was just wondering what would the default be because of its bright zinc plating? Then I would welcome the GRP cladding. That's all. Thanks, Chair.
I'll deal with the last point by councillor Maloney first. If the applicant is agreeable to that, then we can put a condition on around GRP cladding or some other form of treatment. There's no reason not to do that. So that will be an additional condition. In relation to the comments about the police architectural liaison officer, they have been noted, they're in the report, but there are no conditions that reflect them because the suggestions by the police architectural liaison officer are not ones that can be controlled through the planning process. So for example, there is nothing that we could do to ensure that the premises are alarmed. We couldn't ensure mag locks, we can't ensure things like time lock saves. They are simply outside the scope of planning control. I think the other question was about waste storage. Again, your officers satisfied that there is sufficient space within the curtilage of the premises to provide suitable storage for waste. And there is a condition that limits the, ensures that the waste is not put out, you know, is kept within the curtilage of the property. In terms of smells, most of the smells that tend to emanate from these type of establishments tends to be actually from poor management of the fume extraction flues, which is why I suggested the condition right at the beginning, Chair. I think that was all of the points, but if I've missed anything, please let me know.
Thanks, John.
Sorry, Chair.
Sorry.
There was a point missed, and that was the opening hours.
Right, thank you, councillor. So the opening hours, 11:30, are consistent with opening hours in this particular district centre and indeed all other district centres, we tend to allow 11:30. I've certainly known of decisions that have allowed till midnight.
Sorry, Chair, I'll just have to come back on that. It actually says from 7:00 AM in the morning. So I think that was the question that councillor Maloney was asking.
We can certainly vary that. I think it's unlikely that it would start operating at 7 o'clock. But again, some of these, what you're granting is not necessarily for that particular operator. You, as a planning committee, are considering the use of that particular building to sell takeaway food, hot takeaway food. There is clearly then a potential that another operator may wish to operate earlier in the morning in selling sort of hot sandwiches, bacon rolls, that kind of thing. I personally don't think 7 o'clock is unreasonable, given that, again, it's in a district centre where there are similar operations taking place early in the morning.
I don't know your name, but I'll take your comment.
Ian Rushford from Environmental Health, just on the opening hours in the morning. As John says, that maybe they want to do breakfast in the morning, but just some point that maybe I just thought of, actually. We could condition that the fume extraction system doesn't start operating until 7:00 AM because there may be a scenario where they're going to start. because there may be a scenario where they're going to start opening for business for breakfast, but they do some preferential, start cooking at 6am and start firing up the fume extraction. That may cause noise prior to 7am. So perhaps I might suggest a condition that ties the hours of operation of the fume extraction system to those opening hours.
Thanks, Chair. I welcome that suggestion, I think that's very helpful. On the opening hours through you, Chair, I think seven days a week opening at 7am is unreasonable. I would have thought perhaps we'd give people a couple of hours lying on a Sunday morning, so say the earliest is nine o'clock or even 10 o'clock.
Yes, I think that's a reasonable suggestion as well.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the applicant might, you might wish to invite the applicant to comment on the opening hours, you may have a particular...
You will, please.
Thank you, yeah. I think, Rob, very, very positive comments. And I think sometimes there are methods where you can apply to vary conditions and so on. And I think a trial period over a period of time, it wouldn't be a trial period, that's the wrong way to say it, the planning condition will be set in stone that the operating hours will be between particular hours. Now, if over a period of time that everybody was happy and the business operated successfully and respectfully to the surrounding area, the applicant may be minded in a couple of years' time to apply to vary that condition if he felt it was appropriate. And then that would be a consideration for members and for officers to see if, as the proprietor's done his other premises, operates in a respectful and considerate manner. And any variation of a planning condition could be judged on that basis. But going back to the first point, if members consider that the opening hours need to be amended from seven o'clock in the morning, say nine, 10 o'clock on a Sunday morning, then that's a perfectly reasonable approach to take.
Can I just ask, if we were to defer this, given they've been waiting so long, could it come back to, for example, the next meeting or something like that? Or would that be too quick?
I think we probably could get it back to the next one. I think the closing date for items for the next committee is, actually, it might be the end of this week. It's possible, but I think, I'm not sort of clear what the reason for deferral is. I think you've got an undertaking from the applicant.
Chair, I wonder if I could offer some advice here. I'm just concerned that the reason for deferral may be to allow for further consultation. I just want to stress, it's not a requirement on the planning authority to identify stakeholders when they're carrying out consultation. They have to put up site notices, they have to notify neighbouring occupiers and owners, but it's certainly not the role of the planning authority to identify who may have an interest in the application to carry out consultation.
Yes, but the local ward councillor did object to this.
I've just had confirmation that there are some administrative and technical issues around the ability for us to get it back to the next committee, unfortunately, so we wouldn't be able to get it back to the next committee.
One after then?
One after.
Okay. Are we happy if I move, because this gets deferred and brought back? Chair, you want to say something?
One of the things John quoted was the parameters that they worked through between 10%, and they reckon this could be between nine and a half and 10.5%. So I want that examined. I want the traffic impact. County Road is an extremely busy road and with the abundance of takeaways, and there's a query on how many takeaways is there, hot food or whatever, whatever, they don't know the exact numbers, that means checking. Thirdly, the community impact policy, whilst it's not a planning issue, I think that, again, was put in for a reason. And the reason it was put in for was that was an overcapacity of takeaways and hot food establishments in the area. The antisocial behaviour and the crime that gets carried out on County Road, the reality is that we put special police requirements in there to combat that. The hours, I want the hours on a Saturday and Sunday moved to nine o'clock, or considered to be moved to nine o'clock. I'm sure there's other things that I'll be probably bringing up next time we meet here. But if Michael could sort of put that into...
I think we've got some good reasons there. I kind of want to apologise secretly, you've been waiting so long and none of these things are your fault, but there is a procedure to go through on this. So therefore, I will move that we defer this item to a future meeting, okay?
For the benefit of the public record, I should ask councillor Hanson, given he's behind the chair's move to defer the application, just to itemise very explicitly the reasons and additional information required to support the deferral. And again, please constrain those, if you can, to planning grounds, please.
If you put them correct words for us, then, Michael. The conditions of the various to examine, the, and John, you've got me from wrong, the policy on 10%, and the officer believes that was somewhere in nine, nine and a half to 10.5%. So if it's 10.5%, that's outside of the planning policy, and I want that examined and considered. I want the cumulative impact policy, yeah, put my seat back in. I want to examine with the various bodies where that lies in terms, because that was specifically put in to stop the proliferation of hot food and takeaway establishments. That was specifically put in for licenses, takeaways, that was specifically done for that because of the issues that was created in the area. I want the highways to examine the impact upon traffic and the issues that we have on County Road at this point in time, in relation to takeaways, the amount of delivery drivers or delivery cyclists, motorcyclists, van drivers that now exist on County Road and the massive impact that's having on traffic. And also examination of the antisocial behaviour that exists on and within County Road area. That makes sense, Michael?
Just for purposes of clarity and for benefit of the committee, I think it's been important to note that these areas of clarification would relate to the use of this particular premises and this particular application. So in the context of, for example, of ASB nuisance, in the event that the premises isn't operating or has previously operated, you need to provide evidence, or indeed our case officers would examine whether any evidence exists associated with that particular premises. The fact that other adjacent premises may have experienced issues of itself does not mean that this particular premises may do, it may be an indicator, but again, it can't be taken as read. In terms of the other points raised, what you've sought basically is clarification from highways and additional information in terms of traffic movements and whether that will lead to an unacceptable impact on highways and pedestrian safety. Additional information in terms of clarification on the application of cumulative impact policy and its relevance in the context of the planning regime and including clarification of the data within the case officer report in terms of the actual level, in percentage terms of the number of takeaways within the particular district centre. I believe that summarises quite clearly. You happy with that, councillor Hanson?
Yeah, I'll ensure that the planning officers have discussions with the stakeholders, because we've just put £100,000 into policing on County Road, specifically on County Road, to combat some of the antisocial behaviour and all that that's going on.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Councillor Key, you did indicate you wished to raise a particular comment.
Yes, in terms of cumulative impact policy, is this actually a material planning objection? So I'm talking specifically about the objection councillor Gladden has put forward.
Thank you, councillor Key. I think for the benefit of the committee, what councillor Hanson has asked for, in fact, is that exact clarification. What is the status of the policy in the context of the planning process and its weight or otherwise may be taken into consideration in determining the application? That will be provided in the revised report, which the case officer will prepare and submit to the next available committee once that process is completed. With that in mind, we therefore have the chair's motion to defer for the four reasons as expanded on by councillor Hanson and clarified by myself, so I'll move to take a vote.
Chair, could I just make one point, please? As part of this application process, we carried out our own independent survey.
I'm sorry, we're in the middle of the vote now, okay.
Thank you, Chair. If you can confirm your vote on the motion to defer, please.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Sorry, Chair. Four.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Four.
Councillor Merritt?
Four.
Councillor Maloney?
Four.
Councillor Lake?
Four.
Councillor Key?
Four.
Thank you, committees. That concludes the voting, and the effect is therefore at this stage, consideration of the application is deferred. The detailed reasons for deferral and additional information required will be confirmed in writing in the minutes for this meeting, and a further report addressing those issues will be submitted to committee in due course at the earliest opportunity. With that in mind, we'll now move on to item 11, noting that agenda item 10 has previously been withdrawn from consideration today. For purposes of clarity, item number 11 relates to a site at AGM Milling, Mill Street, Liverpool 8, in Riverside Ward. We have no applicants, agents or objectives present for this particular item of business. Sir, members would indulge me, I will display some images on screen, I would ask the case officer to speak to those images once those are visible. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Just wait for Mike to get the images on screen.
Thank you, Chair. This site, it's a very large industrial mill building located in a primarily residential area and currently houses a number of existing telecom equipment on its roof. This proposal seeks to install an additional six antennae and associated equipment on the roof. Mike, I think there should be a photo of the building as it is at the moment, or that should be. So that's the building as we are now, with the proposed antennae on top. Councillors Mumbi and Doyle have objected to the proposal on grounds that residents already experience existing problems with noise and dust from the mill and that nearby occupiers are concerned about the mass and potential impacts on their health and associated amenity. This is a prior approval application where only matters of sighting and design can be considered. The proposal fully accords with the guidance in paragraph 113 of the National Planning Policy Framework, which encourages the use of existing buildings so as to avoid the need for unnecessary ground-based masts. It is considered that the proposed sighting of the antennae on the roof will be at such a height at some 48 metres and on an industrial backdrop that they will be barely discernible in the wider street scene and will negate the need for a ground-based mast, which in itself would be far more prominent and have a greater impact on visual amenity. It's considered, therefore, that the application site on the roof is the optimal place to minimise impact on visual amenity. Paragraph 116 of the MPPF is also clear that local planning authorities must determine applications on planning grounds only and should not seek to set health safeguards that differ from the international guidelines for public exposure. In this instance, the requisite ICNERT certificate has been provided, confirming compliance with those, confirming compliance with the guidance, exposure recommendations, and therefore, whilst health concerns are noted, they are only afforded limited weight. The proposed orientation, operation of the antennae will not add to any existing noise or dust issues referred to by the ward councillors, with any additional noise likely to be solely from the very limited period when the additional antennae are installed, and this in itself would be negligible in any case, given the height of the installation above the ground. So it would be barely noticeable at ground level. As such, Chair, the proposal is considered to fully comply with local and national planning policy in relation to mass, and it's recommended that prior approval be granted.
You're sure? And as such, I don't think there's going to be any questions. I'm going to move the recommendation be approved, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your formal resolution to approve the application. Your vote, please, however, Chair.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Four.
Four.
Councillor Merritt?
Four.
Councillor Maloney?
Abstain.
Councillor Lake?
Four.
And Councillor Key?
Four.
Thank you. Members, that concludes the vote on the application. The vote is six members in favour, no members voting against, one member abstaining. Councillor Maloney, your abstention will be recorded by name as well. Thank you. And that concludes the voting on the application, which is therefore approved on that basis. And we move on to item number 12 on today's agenda, which relates to a site at Utting Avenue, Liverpool, in Fockmore Ward. Similar to our previous item of business, I can confirm that there are no speakers either for or against the application. Therefore, with the committee's indulgence, I will display some images on screen. Once those are displayed, I would ask the case officer to comment on those and summarise accordingly before we move to the vote. Thank you.
John, it's over to you again.
Chair, unless members have any specific issues, I don't think I can really add to what was said previous item and what's already in the report.
Questions? Any questions, John? No? In which case, again, really quickly, I once again move the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. We now have a valid motion to approve the application. Therefore, Chair, your vote, please.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Four.
Thank you, councillor Hanson.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Merritt.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
Abstain.
Thank you. Councillor Lake?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Key?
Four.
Thank you. That concludes the vote on this application. The voting is six members in favour, no members against, one abstention on the vote. The application is therefore approved on that basis. We now move on to our final item of business, number 13 on today's agenda, relating to Muirhead Streetworks at Muirhead Avenue, Liverpool 11, in West Derby Ward. Similar to our previous items of business, no applicants, agents or objectives are present, and subject to the agreement to committee, as opposed to displaying images on screen, can I suggest the case officer may wish to comment, given there are similar issues at play as to our two previous items of business?
Okay, John?
As previously, Chair.
I think it's all. Any contributions? Okay, once again, I'm going to move the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. With a feeling of somewhat of déjà vu, can I take your vote, please?
Four.
Thank you, Chair.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Hanson.
Four.
Councillor Merritt?
Four.
Councillor Maloney?
Abstain.
Councillor Lake?
Four.
Councillor Key?
Four.
Thank you. That concludes the vote on the application. The voting is six members in favour, no members voting against, one member abstaining, councillor Maloney, whose dissent will be recorded by name. That concludes the voting on the application, and the application is on that basis approved. I'm pleased with the rise. That concludes today's item of business, and I'll just invite the Chair to make a few brief closing comments before we conclude today's meeting. Thank you.
Once again, thanks everyone for attending and for your contributions, both officers and members. Be quiet before I'm chairing again, I think, but there you go.
Thank you to the Chair, and thank you to councillor Prince for stepping in at last minute to chair this meeting in the absence of our Chair and Deputy. Thank you, colleagues, for your participation. That concludes...